Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to Wings Playground Parking Area. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
So.
You come up here and sit.
Sit up here, okay? Wow. Alright. So. To the table, push the boat. Um. Oh, I did.
I get the boat for those refunds this morning.
Yeah, you did. I'm working on it. Um, well, first of all, I thank you for giving, um, Wings Early Childhood Center an opportunity to explain how you could help us expand our facilities. Um, you know, we are, um, we opened two years ago and we're now, we've been nearly full, or mostly full for the past year. And so we're going to expand our facility, add two classrooms and a kitchen. And we have enough space for land for, I have enough land for the building itself, but we need, uh, extra space for playgrounds primarily, and maybe a few extra parking slots. So, um, well, there's still a bit of history to this, and you were involved with this. Ronnie Mains was, uh, back five years, so one of that seven years ago, 2015, when the town, the county, um, said that the joint priorities was, you know, broadband, expanding broadband, like spending, um, low-income housing, and expanding childcare. And so, um, at that time, you appointed a work group, which was headed by Michael Whiting and Linda Reeve, and I was part of that work group. We did a study report back to you in 2017, and one of the, uh, outcomes of that report was that eighty-three percent of the families with small children in Utah County would use early childcare if it were available and affordable. So, um, we've got a lot of support there for, for expanding services. Unfortunately, to meet that demand, we would have had to have added two hundred and eighty worth slots, one slot per child. But we're roughly doubling what we had for capacity at that time. So two years later, 2017, the county provided a hundred thousand dollars seed money to help us create this new center. And through grants and donations, we moved that hundred thousand dollar seed money into almost a million dollars. So, uh, and then that money was used to, to buy the old, uh, the abandoned greenhouse or a strength home, and to do a full remodel of it and, uh, set up so it can serve, uh, forty children at any one day. We actually serve much more than forty, many more than forty, because many families grow their children for three days a week, four days a week, so we have a flexible program. So even though we have forty slots, we're probably serving more likely to different families at any one time. Um, so we're fully enrolled at this point. Um, your, your, your contribution at the beginning makes you a ten percent shareholder, shareholder. Um, but we're a nonprofit, so, uh... But the reward comes. Um, if you were to drop by, uh, morning, eight o'clock in the morning, or five o'clock at night, you would see a string of cars coming and going, happy parents, happy children. Almost all of our parents are working. You go have two or three, maybe two that are not working, whether they're parents. The one parents stay at home, but almost all of our parents are working. We subsidize the tuition, uh, for above ninety percent of our children. This means that they come from low income or very low income families. Many of them are below the, uh, that, being from below the federal poverty line. So that's kind of where we are today. Um, we have twelve full-time employees. Uh, this expansion will add twenty-nine slots. So we'll go from forty to sixty-nine slots, serving, you know, more than that number of families. Um, so, uh, we're going to add, we plan to add, uh, two classrooms and a kitchen. One of the classrooms will allow us to start serving children ages from six weeks to a year and a half. Currently, we just serve ages one to five, but there's a huge demand in, in Utah County for working parents who have these really small children, we need a place for them. So anyway, that's the background of, of Wings, uh, some of you are already familiar with that. So you see the, uh, the photo, aerial photo of, of Wings. This photo was done long before the renovation occurred, before the parking lot was repaid and so on. The, uh, may step up here, show you. So, um, this is the property line between the county property and our property. You're familiar with Tom Door Drive and the chain link fence that goes along here separating the airport from our property. So we'll put our addition along in this side and through here, actually goes back and through here. Uh, we'd like to extend playgrounds over into this area and probably try to get some extra parking over in this area. Um, the cars, the jump cars and so on, this stuff is all gone at this point, so, uh, this is from, take, photo was taken a few years ago. So that's our request.
I have a question, more action from here. So, I met with Dave, uh, a couple months ago on this, um, and I asked if you could do some research and see if there were any kind of regulations, um, primarily from the airport that would preclude us from, from considering this.
So, uh, Dave and I met as well, and presented this to the airport, and which the information was presented to the F A A. And because there are no permanent structures that are going over on that side, then it's just playground, there's, there will be a shed, but it's temporary structures, there is no big approach on the, the property line, and so there is no problem.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, when we did, we had discussion about this when this prop, piece of property was going for lease back there, so we leased it, we leased it, leased it, we leased a partial to Peter Carter. But I think, you know, for that lower fence on how it goes out, to that next triangle piece that would form where there's a big trailer right now, and I'm looking at it real earth, I think it would be extremely beneficial for us to utilize that property for this school. I don't have a problem that we can't use it for anything else other than that, for storage, or something such as this is being presented to us right now. Uh, they're, they are limited on space out there. And actually, Wings has been very diligent, and they also have met their obstructions along the way, 'cause I kind of keep contact, and you guys have, uh, moved past those. And, and I, I see a huge potential with Wings. I mean, just seeing what they've already gone through, all the diversity they have to face, and all the challenges, they have a good, strong volunteer perspective. I don't have a problem with this.
Norman, Dave, I have a question. So, we can, we can kind of see, it looks like a black line at the bottom part of the, uh, the parking. It's, it's actually the fence line, I believe.
Yes.
So is your request, is that encompassing, if we were to draw, continue that black line straight across where you see, uh, the cars part? Is that what you're requesting from that point north?
Yeah, I think that's right, because my understanding is the part below that is actually leased to Peter Carter, and there's a fence all the way across.
Okay. And, and I ask you, just primarily for clarification for the public, uh, just, just so everybody knows what, what we're looking at and what we're considering here. And, and I would have to say, I, I know that Wings, uh, has a positive community impact in there, uh, if I'm locating this now, and it's always full.
Right.
Full of, uh, full of kids, and this, I think, fulfills a need in a niche, uh, within our community that's not, uh, in the, so I would, I would certainly support, um, continuing to assist Wings in this one.
I appreciate that.
No, I think it's a good idea, and I've had a couple discussions with Derek about this already, so. I do think we, we need to support, yeah, to provide the needed service to the community.
Really appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, primarily when we did the lease with Peter Carter, we had to move a lot of their stuff out of there with, with, with this idea and my idea of the future, so I think it's, I'm just, you know, honestly, my head's not moving. We live in there, we sit through each other.
It's been, it's been a long path since 2015, when I joined the work group, um, but, you know, step by step by step by step, and here we are today with fully enrolled, about fifty families being served, um, and looking to do more.
Excellent. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And Derek, so we'll put this on the agenda for the next regular.
Okay, great. All right. Come on, Jim.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing this month?
Good as well.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead. So, Lady Army has been super busy. We had some staffing issues to manage. I was a native person, who's, we're only actually here last year, short-handed, just got a number, nine of them, so, working with value, uh, doing everything we can, all working with the team, feeling known, you can't.
I, the biggest problem we have is, there's, there's capable people out there, it's just the salary is not enough for them to want to take their job.
I agree, I think the salary has a big part, they're willing to play in hiring people, they're willing to stick around. Also, I don't know if people just want to work, but except for, uh, fingers, so that apply, so, um, the other thing we're looking at is, um, we're having a hard time trying to find parts nowadays, backwards, everything's getting harder to find.
Is that also bad news stuff?
Everything, it doesn't matter, there's small vehicles, uh, destroyed everywhere across the board. Um, all of that, we're starting to get some Rhino vehicles in, I think we have two lacking that we should get into life for the next, uh, D H S offers. Other than that, pretty much we've got everything. Um, the police department, we're getting those updated to speak, um, the other doctor Ringo is, uh, we're putting some stuff out there, 'cause I have one that's definitely upgraded, and we had that totally, you know, third, eighth equipment, so, we're trying to find, we'll get that when we have time. For this next year, I would like to talk about maybe possibly leasing equipment in some smaller personal vehicles for departments. We're lacking on vehicles, and it seems like every other weekend, I'm making a phone call that I'm having, still from one person gives another, just to have a reliable vehicle to drive that account, so, I think that's something that we need to talk about and move forward in the future for next year, so, um, I'm gonna come up with some information on that, and when we start the budget process, I'll be presenting something with, well, information, so. And as far as equipment for the landfill, um, I think we'd definitely benefit from leasing equipment out there. Um, I know their enterprise fund and their situation's a little bit different with money, but, um, I think it's something that we could, instead of spending a half million dollars for a machine, probably work at least. Along with me busy, so I have myself in two hundred mechanics right now, and Roman Bridge is currently doing, like, their vending roads, and every trucker, every, almost every vehicle, so if there's a small margin for error or anything, and, um, if something were to break down, it's not like we just snap our fingers and have another trucker and say, so, we're working on this up to try to get that going. And on top of that, the landfill is, uh, got taken away for its due inspection, and it's just, uh, having a lot, hard time there, so. We're doing everything we can, um, we're gonna, we did, um, increase some of the, you know, you should have known, we charged the, each department to try and account for the operation and everything, so, um, other than that, everything's going good.
Just a quick question, do you think there would be any value in just leasing a water truck, just to have it on hand, on sale?
As of right now, as of right now, we're here with Dave. We did that in prior years, and it just sat there, so, I don't really want to spend a lot of money, actually.
But there are companies around that would have one available plus.
Yeah, the, I think last year was the year that I leased one, and we had, I don't know how we called that, so. It's, it's, yeah, it took a few days to get here, so, but we're doing all we can, we, um, are trying to be preventing it, it's the last year of this year. Yeah, we're doing, um, it seems like this is some off.
And other some discussion early on, once the fuel prices took a dramatic jump, that it's gonna take a pretty good hit on our budget.
Well, yes. So, uh, we, we had a non-allocated five hundred per fuel, so back in 2014, our fuel budget was around three hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, something like that.
Far.
And previous. And, uh, fuel prices run down, and we actually, I wanna say it was maybe to a hundred thousand, we put to the side instead of for a non-location fund, and he's moved it over in a different budget line, he could then use that money to cover that, so, with the fuel prices going up, that non-allocated money will probably go back into fuel, is reasonable, but that might not be enough.
A further assessment of the asset's value.
So it'll be close, but if that non-allocated money should help.
It's a bottom line.
Yes, it is. You know, for your prices, if the whole arm of the chart is, uh, so.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, maybe you have some sort of electric water. The electrical battery decides those water tanks.
Exactly.
I don't think we'll understand that yet.
Oh, yeah, you're not far.
Can we have a vessel water truck, I'm sure?
That's what I'm, non-driver water.
Oh, yeah. Um, that's all I have for you guys, do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't.
You answer my questions.
Okay. My apologies again. Hey, Highway one fifty-one fiber opportunity, Eric Tittle, I would be Lesford, and Cory Brindle. Nope. You too? You can come with too. Bring your chair.
Bring your chair.
And then, oh, I've got Jesse Morehouse here too, uh, have, uh, some of this basket sealed, uh, because two primary stakeholders.
Bring your chair.
The, uh, what we're talking about here. Oh, yeah. From Dispatch, and dispatch, and Jesse, I'm sure most of you are familiar with them, from IP Director in our school district, just across the street. Um, and maybe, uh, for the most part, I'm gonna turn it over to Cory, uh, because it's really his presentation that we want to either talk about, go through, and specifically talk about the, uh, the, the agreement that he's proposing, uh, today, and what, what that constitutes, if he's had a chance to review it. Um, Cory comes from Region Ten, um, and he's, we've been talking, this is not, even though it seems like maybe a late-breaking, kind of like, uh, well, where does this come from? Out of the loop, well, you've been working on this seven hundred mile-ish, you know, loop around the southwest portion of the state, and how to complete it for, with ten plus years, and he can go into that a little bit more, I won't tell Cory's story for him, but, um, one of the things that he's proposing, and this is just from your broadband office, and that's for Emily and I are representative of, is the, there's a number of different parallel, um, community center, I keep, I don't keep working, but I have staff, thanks for that. Uh, that, we've been looking at a number of priorities, both local, local middle mile, you'll hear it say middle mile sometimes, but sometimes we mean local middle mile, and sometimes we mean broader middle mile, it's very confusing, I know. Uh, but there is middle mile that is the regional back halls and the redundancies, and then there's our local redundancies, and primarily, the, the office, uh, has always been focused more on our local county, because that's what our, that's what, that's what we take care of, but there's always the regional ones that we have a coordinate with, previously that was handled a lot more by the Southwest Cog, which you guys remember of, and Miriam was, you know, we tried to integrate with whatever she had going, um, since that's just kind of void left there, to some degree, that's being filled, not by Cory, but at least, we're looking at regional middle mile, Region Ten, and he can go into that, has reasons to, to broaden beyond the simple Region Ten boundaries, because it benefits them, but it also benefits a regional middle mile, um, that goes to Denver, and goes to Salt Lake, and goes to Phoenix, beyond just Region Ten, so he's going up to Grand Johnson Glenwood, and looking at expanding that direction as well, as down to the south, and we brought in San Luis Valley, and some of their broadband coordinators, which we've been, um, kind of, uh, working with as well, so there's a lot of the regional interplay, and that's where, and also in our strategic plan, we both identify, um, the local projects that we're pursuing, uh, that were being funded primarily by the dollar dollars that were allocated last year. In fact, I have a meeting this afternoon to get the Coleman part of it kicked off, and later this week about the Hatcher project that's being kicked off, so those are both well underway, for local projects, to help us get last mile mostly, and also local redundancy, but then, in our strategic plan, we also definitely have them high on the list, maybe highest, it's hard to say what's the most highest priority, but they're all high, but region, getting pathways into and out of our community are, gotta be right up there, if not the highest and the highest, and the hardest to do, because they're the most expensive. And so we both identified that in our strategic plan that we adopted this year from a broadband perspective, and then also, um, the 2017, um, strategic plan that the Southwest Cog not only identified that as an opportunity, and again, both the, when they were doing their squad analysis, it was both a weakness, that we didn't have it, and that there was an opportunity that we should pursue, and they listed, and you'll hear these names, Loplot Electric that they should work with, getting on their coals, they talked about Region Ten in the, in the actual Southwest Cog, working with them, because that was, you know, they've been doing a lot more, a lot sooner than we have, uh, as far as, you know, leveraging dollar dollars and getting their broadband built out, and thinking regionally. Um, and so there's a lot of overlap into like, oh, this came to fruition, but it partly came to fruition because we, I mean, Cory can talk about this more, couldn't wait on C dot to solve the problem for us, because it may be so far down the road, may happen, but it may be so far down the road that we can't even take advantage of some of the other infrastructure dollars to build up to the last mile and to make our redundancy better sooner, and this gives this opportunity, and there's other participants, including Loplot, uh, Loplot Electric, which you mentioned, um, Loplot County, and the Southern U Tribe, that are all inactive and equal participants in this effort, so with that, I'll turn it over to Cory, and he can go over that, and then, um, Emily, do you have anything to add to that in, in introduction?
I will finish up.
Okay, so I'll have Emily finish up, so we'll go, turn it over to Cory, I'll step back a little bit.
Great, nice to see you guys again, um, sure appreciate the time, and I'm Cory Brindle with Region Ten, uh, we're based up in Montrose, six counties, eighteen communities. We got into broadband thing early, and I was also involved in the Southwest Cog in 2009, if you ever seen the original, uh, funding put fiber into some of the communities. And one of the pieces that was lacking from that program, and it's reflected in the 2017 analysis as well, was the middle mile connectivity between the communities, so that's always been large infrastructure projects, um, high cost, long tail projects, things that, you know, move slowly and cost a lot, basically. And, uh, for no reason, it's, it hasn't been done in the twelve years since thirteen, since, uh, the 2009 placement of the building. So I came up, I'm, I'm working on basically taking the five regions of the western side of Colorado and connecting them together, so that we can build a giant fiber loop around the state, and when there's a landslide, or a fire, or an excavator goes through that line, our services continue to work. High product of that is it brings additional capacity, because we're bringing capacity from the east and from the west to each of the communities that are in Riverbend. Um, additionally, we're bringing internet access in from Denver, from Salt Lake City, and from Albuquerque, and that provides us the ability to get traffic out of the state in three directions, not just to Denver, which over time should reduce costs. So ultimately, this enables the last mile providers, the ISPs in each of the communities, to make additional investments, to push that capacity out to the customers, to increase their liability of the services that are provided, and hopefully over time, uh, make it more cost-effective. So, you know, historically, we've seen these plans hatched in Denver, and they come over the hill, and they don't quite reach the places that we live. And we live in the Alamo, I mean, Chris, if you've got one road up, we're in the middle of the mountains, you've got no second path, you guys are fortunate, you have the possibility of a second path. So, the, the plans come over from Denver, um, they, they kind of fell short, and I thought, gosh, we gotta start driving this from the community heart, we gotta start acting and, and leading and providing some architecture, and some funding, and some plans, and what I came up with was four parts, um, the Southern U Indian Tribe, um, to build a lineup, Highway one fifty-one, Loplot County, because they'll benefit from the redundancy and the additional capacity. Um, then I talked to Eric, and I'm doing discussion here for quite some time, helping with various projects, and, uh, to bring Archilleta County in, and then the last one was really, um, Loplot Electric, it has the pole, so if we had all the money in the world, we'd love to bury the kind of cable under the ground along one sixty-one and, and take the highest cost, hundred percent solution path, but we gotta deal with reality, and we gotta deal with the funding that we have, and, and the things that are possible from our community point of view, not from the central or state community. And, uh, what I thought is that if we brought the four partners together, Coals, Tribe, two counties, we can put together the match money, I've been able to identify that there's funding available in, um, Denver to match the four partners' matched dollars, and we can get a project to finally, after thirteen years, be able to bring the fiber into the Gosa, um, reach the communities along the way, the Barbel, and Allison, and Tiffany, and Ignacio, partner with the tribe, which is a deep opportunity. And at the end of the day, it has a global benefit on the statewide architecture that the state has really put their dollars behind, helping out to, to get across I seven, down five fifty, um, the second phase of that will be down to Wausau Verde, and cross one sixteen, and cross the pass, you know, maybe we can see that asset through the build today. So, so I'd love to ask for your support, um, you know, it's a, it's a project that has dual benefits, both local benefits and more regional benefits, something that's been elusive for a long time. We've gotta go to Denver and advocate, uh, if we get your support, we need to advocate for the money, uh, we need to get through the application, review, the approval process, and then the actual, it becomes a, an actual contract, so. But if you answer any questions or give any context, it will be helpful.
My question is, is I've been waiting to see this contract for review, or the, uh, information that's coming out for the, uh, negotiation on this, as far as the percentages of the players that are involved. It was my understanding that there was going to be something sent out last week. I may have misunderstood this, but that, that was my understanding, uh, when we chatted last, last year.
This is, okay. Um, what's the, that's, uh, you're, you're looking for basically from all these partners, two million?
Yeah, uh, five hundred thousand dollar commitment per partner, and that rolls up to two million, and then we would, uh, see them dollar for dollar match from Department of Local Affairs, the G I A.
Okay, and what I've experienced, I mean, the money we've already invested in broadband has really come to a good, true fruition, so, this is virtually the last piece of the puzzle, to really get some strong, good redundancy met, and, um, not only that, but from the front range, we always hear, we get that down. I guarantee you this, we're not gonna get that down. I guarantee you, Chris, we're not gonna get let down on a lot of, a lot of opportunities. They're gonna happen our way. But not only that, but I see huge benefit in the, in the factor that redundancy. How many times have we all gone to a store here and we can't run our car because lines won't cut? We can't get transactions done, we can't get business done. Emergency services don't get dispersed accordingly. They have to, you have to scramble and set up an alternative route to get emergency, yeah, out to a response. With this, we won't have to worry about that. I, I, I've been involved, I've been the member connect, then you started, and I got a lot more education, more than I ever really wanted to have. As far as this is concerned, Eric's educated me a lot. I think if we don't get in with these other four, other few players, getting this type of group together is huge. And us being a part of it, you know, it's gonna be better. The thing is, either we, it's gonna happen with us or without us, one way or the other. But I don't see a problem in getting behind this. And I don't think there's enough time to leverage.
Here's my concern. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So just as I expressed last week, so the community has already committed upwards to seven hundred thousand dollars between last year and this year. Broadband has already received the vast majority of all of the ARPA funds that we have been allocated, the 2.7 million dollars. But when we look at how we've divided them out, I, I am a proponent of broadband. We need this. But if we're gonna give another half a million dollars to this, is the ask. And I just got this in my package, so I apologize, I didn't see it. That's certainly the lying chair. And I would guess that if I went to any one of your groups and said, hey, if you can come up with, would you be willing to do without, so I can have this project? That, I realize it's been some time in the making, but to us, to me, it was last week. We can't, we haven't been able to budget for it. I've talked with our county manager, said, hey, let's find half a million dollars, like we just have it laying around. But my concern is that we have a lot of needs in this community. And when we have folks that are facing food inequity, we have folks that are, can't find a place to live because we have housing issues. I don't think they care too much about broadband if those things, those needs aren't met first. That's not to say I don't believe that this is an absolutely necessary thing. But where do we put our money? And in many ways, this is for the greater good in many aspects. But there are a lot of individual people, their needs have to be served as well, and I think we have an obligation to that. I'm all about getting behind this, but we have a very short window of time. What, what's the, what's the time that we need a commitment on this?
If the application is being submitted on the first, to match the money with a hundred percent match. So fifty, fifty.
So we have, we have a week in essence.
You know, maybe that's what you've been saying, we contribute for housing. We have that housing project, we have a house project.
Agreed.
We've also helped out with Habitat for the Diverse. We also have given money to Food Prohibition. Okay, and there's another community that we aspire, who've given money to Aspire. Okay, this money, this ARPA money, the primary premises of this money being sold out, broadband was number one from the state.
From the pressure.
Yeah, from the treasury. Number one. They saw the weakness in where, when COVID hit, kids couldn't get the education they needed. Our kids couldn't get the education they needed because they didn't have the access. To me, that's a priority, that's a future benefit, because our kids are our future, just like with wings, they're our future. We, we may not see the benefit right now from that, but our kids are gonna see the benefit from that. That connectivity, and I, I really, really stress to you guys that that money was truly allocated for this purpose, but we took and used that money for other purposes. Food, housing, you know, assisting other people, getting other people in housing. We've done a lot for the community already, incentivizing for housing. You know, it's got time, we gotta have time to let that play out, see how long we've done. But initially, this money, and we have five hundred thousand of that. Primary for broadband. I'm not saying we allocate, or I, I would, I'd give the five hundred right now, because that was what was primarily given to us for. But we use all that other extra money for other stuff too, including broadband. But this is gonna be a continued investment, but we're gonna have a continued return on this. Not only just through the small amount, but thirty thousand a year that we'll get back on some, some of the fiber resources or something like that.
I mean, I've got a ROI that I was able to kind of pencil out for all the other, well, this hasn't been looked at from that perspective yet, but it's not that it doesn't happen. It's got twenty-six strands as part of it that would be owned by, if, you know, if you're a full participant, and if you negotiate, I don't know where that comes into. But if you do a full participant, I think it's twenty-six strands as part of the current strand from here to basically what Ignacio.
Yeah, that's what we have to pencil out. We're trying to give a real application.
That could be used as a dark fiber lease to any ISP or other we use ourselves. We could do all sorts of things that we can think about now, or things that we can't even conceive of, but that we could be used for later, and equally, no. So if some ISP, Zito, Visionary, somebody wants to put somewhere along that path, fiber to the premise, they can lease that line for me long term. And yeah, it could be, you know, I mean, if you did the whole path, two strands, might be thirty thousand a year, but that's just two strands of twenty-six. So there's a potential ROI, but that's not even the most important reason why it's even being brought up. It hasn't been. I could see, and maybe Katie will have a chance to kind of talk about the redundancy factor, especially for emergency services, and what she experiences routinely, also what we experienced last year, almost a year to this day, which maybe you'll remember, on April twenty-seventh of last year, where we were down for a full day, almost our complete communications capability into and out of this. I had to drive Arbelis to find out even what the problem was, finally talking to, to get the cellular symbol, because all the cell phones were down, all the landlines were down, if you remember that. Visionary was somewhat up, but they were fully saturated, and our only other redundant link out of this area was the microwave line. So it was barely functional, you could get a broken voice and a few packets out, that is it. And so this, you know, as far as its benefit to the future, that has an immediate benefit from day one, really, from the moment you look it up, and you set up the routers properly, and you're getting your bandwidth right directionally, a fiber test impact is not the same as it was back on April twenty-seventh. And then there's, there's both immediate impacts, Katie, and then there's future impacts. You could, you could, when we had the meeting with the Public Utility Commission on the after, the after report of that outage, it's a big deal to lose nine-one-one services and E-nine-one-one services for that long. I mean, places have gotten fined hundreds of thousands of dollars in place, other providers for not providing, right, that redundancy. The way they get out of it is they say, well, it's too hard, it's too hard to get here, because it's too expensive, as it is. And, and they, and what, I think the Century Link rep was on the line, and he asked, well, how can this be prevented? You might have asked a question, or maybe the PUC guy on the phone asked that to me, and he said, well, you could build this redundant line between here and, and Bayfield, for Century. They'd be the only ones that get to use it. It would just be for them, so that they could protect their own redundancy. And that's where, where Katie really is, because she's, E-nine-one-one in particular is hamstrung by the fact that the state only awards a contract to one vendor to provide E-nine-one-one services, even though the capacity and the technology exists to use a multiplicity of options. Well, those options have to exist before the political will, the lobbying, and the back pressure could be put onto the state, or the Public Utilities Commission to say, or Century Link to say, okay, you have to use this line that Archuleta County already has, right here, from here to Ignacio, and then out there. You have to provide redundant services to this community, and we're giving you the opportunity. Why won't you do it? That's, that's out of our, or that's more of a state level, where commissioners can certainly have an impact on that. Katie can have an impact on that, the PUC can have an impact on that, that that infrastructure has to exist first, before there can even be a way to take advantage of that for E-nine-one-one services. And so this is part of that, but I don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
Yeah, I think you did a great job. I have a little bit to add. You know, outages do impact us, the infrastructure has to be there for redundancy. I think it's a hot button word in my industry, because when you don't have it, then you can lose emergency services, communications capabilities, which can have a real impact on the community. So that outage that Eric was talking about did occur last year in April. I don't know, if you recall, it was a fiber line cut over in Bayfield. One way in, one way out leaves us incredibly vulnerable to these accidental outages, as well as intentional sabotage, right? Gives us vulnerable to those things. It also means that for repairs, we're down during those repairs as well. So not only are we down in the initial outage, but we're down for it to be fixed, because there's no backup line for us to, to switch over to, there's no network redundancy to handle that during repairs. So we have impacts on our sensor, on our community, on the tourists who are here. You know, the public expects when they dial nine-one-one to be sent to an agency who can send the most appropriate help quickly and confidently. I do have continuity plans in place, and our nine-on-ones do roll to our neighboring P S A over in Durango, but it, I will be honest with you, it impacts response times. For a call to be routed to a P S A that's sixty miles away, with staff who are not familiar with our geographical area, not familiar with our jurisdictional boundaries, who are understaffed and have a much higher call volume, and for that call information to be relayed to us via radio, there is unquestionably an impact on response times, and it's a negative impact. So, you know, NG nine-one-one is coming down the pipe, and things are ramping up in terms of the services that are being expected for nine-one-one to provide. We cannot have redundancy for our systems if there's not infrastructure in place, as Eric was saying. And so this opportunity, you know, I really support our participation in this MOU, because I don't foresee the opportunity to build out that infrastructure at, at such a reasonable price, with such a reduced timeline, anywhere in the near future, if at all, to support our emergency services, communications systems, which, which really, again, we're at the end of this boat here, one way in, one way out. We're really vulnerable to those outages, and we've experienced them. So that's, you know, I'm here, I'm here.
With a lot of that, down there in Allison and Arbelis, a lot of the calls get routed to San Juan County, and then bounce back up to here, and then it gets dispersed out. You know, that can be as long as, what, fifteen, twenty, thirty seconds?
I.
Or in the longer.
Yeah, I would say it's longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When somebody's needing help, those thirty seconds mean a lot.
So one of the challenges there, and like in Uriah County, we had a fiber cut recently, it took down Uriah in Griswade, until you arrived in the interior, this post told you it went through the cable, and all the mobile cellular services went down. So that meant the person having the issue initiating the call couldn't connect with their cell phone and make the call. So we have a redundant line that was built forty-nine miles, forty-six point nine three miles worth of fiber that went down there. We're now negotiating with both Verizon, and with another private provider for use of the new lines, and we've got two paths into that area. So if one does get cut, it, it can continue going. In Gunnison County, you know, we worked diligently to get cotton capacitors, to get fiber over cotton, put it out. That was another opportunity for redundancy. These play out over and over, especially in the Alamo areas. The geography is not easy, providers have not built the secondary infrastructure that they like. They, they can't do it, so.
Well, I, I think during that timeframe, not only could you not make a cellphone call, speaking of that last year's outage, and it's not to say that that instantly gets off, but like you just mentioned, you have to then go the next step, get them to use that redundant link. But last year, you couldn't make the Southern Utribe call, you couldn't make the landline call, so if, you know, you could route a nine-one-one call from outside of our area to Durango, but you couldn't make a nine-one-one call out of here to even get to Durango. There was no pathway. So some of, I don't know that anybody died during that day, thankfully, and hopefully that didn't happen, but it was a shot across the bow, if there ever was one.
Can't wait for you to have a fire breakout on that day. Or reverse those communications. Evacuate. Reverse nine-one-one would not work. Is that correct? So whether it's for economic development, or it's for E-nine-one-one, or education, or healthcare, the needs that you have here in Archuleta County throughout this region are exactly the same that exist up in Glenwood Springs, and Garfield, and Mesa, and that area. We're literally milliseconds away from that area. They've got mudslides, they've got excavators, they've got all the fires, they've got all the anomalies that you have here. But if we can work together statewide, and make sure we've got an east and a west loop around this ring, when one goes down, the other remains up. And then beyond that, the next plan is to subdivide the state into slightly smaller rings, so we can endure multiple failures at that point, so that's kind of the.
Rings of redundancy.
Yeah, that's where the roadmap will be to go. The first pass is getting the critical infrastructure. We've got one east-west path across the state right now, and that's I-7. I don't know what happens in I-7, fires, mudslides, constructions, all these issues. Most of our outages in Montrose area aren't in Montrose, they're actually in Everett. There's a lot of activity in and around Everett, highways rebuilt, reconstruction going on, there's housing facilities being built, takes out the cabling of their cost. So creating this, this kind of larger domain where we have resiliency, that, that's, that's one of the big keys to this whole project, is to make that work. The, the local benefits, I guess, sorry. One other point, the local benefit is that Colorado Broadband Office on April nineteenth, just Sarah Smith, who's maps, they do a lot of mapping, so they keep the mapping for broadband availability. Southern Archuleta County is one of the critically unserved areas that the state would love to address. And specifically that Highway 151 and out, the homes and businesses, it's not very expensive, but it's an area that won't have the opportunity to get broadband services if we just do Highway 160, yes. So this eighty percent solution is this compromise to go up on the poles and do this sooner and quicker, also has a peripheral benefit, you know, adding services to an area that is identified as a priority area, and probably would be difficult to reach otherwise.
And, and CDOT has the intent to connect on 160, but they still don't. They have not committed.
It will eventually happen, and that, that, maybe five or six, I mean, even our stuff over, this plan for Waplahter Fiber, that engineering plan was probably finished three years ago. And it takes that long for them to do it, and it probably took them a year to do the engineering plan. And then it was, you know, a two-year build that they delayed for a year. So it's a long process for them, and it's very expensive. And when they looked at that, it was gonna be twelve million dollars for them, and we did the cost here, but the amount that, that we would have to figure out for even working with, with CDOT was, what, three million dollars just of like, kind of, as a, as a handy up?
CDOT themselves estimated the project at thirty-four million dollars to go across 160, and pieces they need to do, and we're a three million dollar short, we're a three million dollar less in this budget to get similar results. So, and we're on a timeframe that's pitting forward the poles versus excavating and pervading and all that, all the highway.
Right. I'm interested, Jesse, will, will it maybe reflect that on our roster through the schools? So, actually, I was, I was.
I was answering my hunger. But I think, you know, one thing, I, I think that, you know, there's been a lot of really
discussion on the, on some of the issues with a catastrophic event like that, and some of, and, and with the emergency services, and those are all, you know, those types of events, catastrophic events do happen. Emergency services are something that our community's expected of us, and very important to make sure that, that are reliable. And, and what I wanted to go is, I wanted to bring up a couple of considerations here that I thought were important to, to kind of frame the context of this. And one of them is, this is a fleeting opportunity. If we decide that we want to spend five hundred thousand dollars in three years, this project's gonna be done, and it's not gonna, you know, I'm trying, for us to go, we need to go try to get the, a match from the state. We need to do all that ourselves, instead of having someone do it for us, which is awful nice. And, and to see if we could even still tap into it. So this is a fleeting opportunity, and, and, and so the decision is kind of like now, or, you know, leaving it up to hope, and hope is never a very good strategy, I think. The other thing is, is there's real benefits in this just day to day for the community, both for community members and for businesses. And so right now, when I talk to people about our. And so right now, when I talk to people about our situation from a connectivity perspective, you know, I, I, I use a quip that most small towns in the western state of Colorado have been used, which is that we're at the end of the internet, right? And, and, and it sounds kind of funny, it is actually true, but it's actually not very funny at all. But, yeah, so, so what you end up with is why are we like that? Well, we're not a lucrative market. No one's ever going to come in and make this investment because they can make a lot of money out of this plus. We will have to make an investment for our community. It's the only way it's going to happen. Uh, right now, there's actually money available where we can get matched dollar for dollar to make it happen. That type of community is not always available. It, it would be a crying shame if we had to double the amount of money that we spend later on down the road just like the same thing that we can get now. I, I, I don't think that's a very good use of our, of our local money. The, uh, the other thing is, is, so multiple fiber paths that increase that redundancy, they also increase competition. And so one of the things that I look at is, and you can go online and you can look this stuff up. So Bayfield pays, the Bayfield School District pays a quarter of the cost that we do for our bandwidth. So that's just one example, but that example is not just a school thing, it's an everyone thing. So everyone in this county pays more for internet services than you do if you live in even a very close by community. Like maybe another example is, uh, um, I asked a friend of mine who lives up in Colorado Springs about his, you know, home, uh, internet connectivity situation. He has fiber optic internet to his house at one gig for fifty bucks a month. Do any of you have that? Yeah, so, 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 so that's the difference between having competition and not having competition. I'm a huge fan of competition. Right now, there is none here in our community suburbs. So the other thing is, is, uh, when, when, uh, so, so, well, just one more thing on that is reducing broadband costs. It, it encourages businesses to, you know, it makes it more appealing location for businesses, whether it's an individual working remotely or whether it's actual like a larger business service. But, um, so, so when, when, when we don't invest in stuff like this and, and take care of our community, one, one of the challenges, like I said, is that it probably, we might not get that opportunity to come around again. And one really good example, and some of you guys who here remembers it, but a few years ago, at, when I think we all got sick and tired of not being able to use our cell phones one summer when all the tourists came in, is, uh, we had a meeting out at, uh, out, out at Paz, I believe, where we brought in Verizon. We were like, how come you guys don't give us the service we need? And, and I don't know if anyone remembers Verizon's response, yeah, but.
Kimberly can't say it, even the.
But, but, but what we can say, I think, um, is that they said, well, we wanted to build another tower in your town X number of years ago, and your town said no, so we left. We didn't come back. And, and, and I think that if we don't take advantage of this opportunity now, what you're going to find is that in a handful of years, there's going to be people screaming for less expensive, more reliable internet. And they're going to be like, why don't we have it? They're going to be like, well, because your county said no a couple of years ago, and so you don't have it. And I think that would be, you know, that'd be a tough, I, I think that that would not be doing our community any favors. And then one last thing I, I need to do with is it also leaves our community behind with its ability to access technology. And, and with the, so in the school district, access and technology comes in two forms. And one of those is we have students who were literally giving, um, Wi-Fi cards to or, or hotspots to so they can connect to the internet because their families can't afford probably being in the internet.
Or they didn't have it.
Or, or it wasn't. And so we're doing this, through the pandemic, we had to do this to help them out, and we're still doing it with disadvantaged families in our community. And the, uh, if we can reduce the cost of broadband internet, we can make it more affordable for families. We will have fewer of those types of challenges within our community. So that's one. The other thing is we spend a lot of money in the school district, in other businesses of, of larger sizes would, would be in the same situation where we have to pay for a lot of hardware that we keep in our school district to, um, back up our, all our files, to harden ourselves against cyber attacks, things like that. And, uh, all of that has to be on the premises because we can't leverage all the cloud-based services, which are much more affordable and would actually reduce our costs to use such services. We can't access them with the risk of having one line that can be cut by somebody, you know, on having a bad day to back up. And, uh, so this, the, if we'd be able to use money to put, instead of putting in a back closet full of, you know, put flashing lights all over, we'd not put in more stuff in the hands of students if we didn't have to pay for that stuff onsite because we'd be able to get it cheaper by virtualizing and putting it in the cloud somewhere. And, uh, other businesses would be, you know, are in the same boat. So, so those are the types of modern services that we just can't access because of our current situation. So just a couple of thoughts, I, I think where there's real benefits that businesses and individuals in the county can come out of this. And the other thing is, to go back to my first comment, is it's a fleeting opportunity. We will not get something like this in this form again anytime soon. And, uh, I, I, I would recommend that, that, that the act, the launch of the benefit at the time.
That's just, I think, from my perspective, we, we need to approach it as a cost versus benefit. So anybody that was paying attention, I think the county showed, and this work in particular, showed that we, we are committed to helping out housing. And at the end of the day, if you look at it, how many, how many people are we affecting? We're doing, I think, everything we can within reason, taxpayers' money to, to assist that. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're, we affect maybe a couple of hundred people. And this opportunity might give us to, to have a positive effect on some thousand every more, you know, to the whole communities. So.
Chair, if I could make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention. Number one, the collaboration that is happening to make this plan is monumental. You all have met with me and tribal council and, you know, and how rare this opportunity is that we get to partner with them. I think by you all jumping into this partnership with the other county and the Southern Ute Tribe, it is really showing faith in, in Archuleta County in collaboration, number one. Number two, the gigabyte service that we could have here in Archuleta County or terabyte service that we could get here because of this development, I, I can tell you, this opportunity at this cost will not come back to us. Next time it'll cost us thirty million dollars instead of a half million. And so on behalf of economic development, I cannot recruit businesses here unless I have a stable broadband environment because of, you all have seen it, the trajectory of, um, technology in the workforce through COVID is off the charts. And there is not one line of business that doesn't use technology anymore. So to be able to diversify our economy, getting into Klomen, sorry, getting into Klomen is going to be astounding and we can, uh, actually get some light industrial, light commercial development in there to help diversify the economy, but they also need that fiber. We need this redundant loop. We need to be able to connect into the state to make everything more reliable and more equitable for citizens and all of our businesses. This will also assist economic development in diversifying some of our economy. So I urge you to approve this MOU and to get into this partnership and show our neighboring organizations that we are a regional player. The, um, broadband office is hosting a regional broadband summit tomorrow. We are co-hosting it over in Cortez. We are bringing together sixty of our regional partners to discuss further development of a broadband regional approach. With all the infrastructure money that is coming down the pipe, we are getting ahead of the curve on the conversation, hands and plan to be able to access more of those infrastructure funds from a regional perspective. We feel like we'll have a better opportunity. This isn't the last time we're going to hear about broadband. In the next five years, we're going to do a whole lot of work because this is once in a lifetime money that we're ever going to see. This is a very rare opportunity right now to connect this redundant loop. And, uh, I couldn't be more thrilled to say that we could have terabyte service here.
The capacity is there and so, yeah, it's all amount, it's all of demand. I think from the get-go, what did you say, from day one, hundred gigabit, both directions?
Speeds and fees.
Yeah, it's a question of how many pounds of the machine.
Yeah.
We paid a bit faster.
Right.
And so its capacity is almost one of it, I figure, terabits might not even be able to, it might go to seven bits in some days, you know.
So, so driving here last night, I had some time in the car to think. And, and you, you kind of had that in the shower moment where you kind of started organizing things in your mind. Last night I put together a little bit of list that I'd share with you guys is these markets tend to operate in either scarcity, where you've got a monopoly situation, kind of situation we're in, where they operate in a, in a more abundant fashion, in, in the abundance model. And in the scarcity model, your prices are high. In the abundance model, your prices are low. And the capacity, uh, that's delivered to the town, under the scarcity model, your capacity is low. And in the abundance model, the capacity is higher. The reliability under the scarcity model is very fragile. We, we all experience that. That's exactly what you guys are sharing. Um, under the abundance model, when we bring the lines in from east and west, the capacity is higher. The performance of the numbers, when you have two routes in and out, is higher under the abundance approach. In competitive forces, you know, under the scarcity model, the monopoly model are low. You're basically dealing with, you're competing with the guy that's selling the services to you to get it out to all these businesses and nearly anxious. Flip side is the margin, uh, that's derived in the scarcity model is very high. The person holding you captive and providing a minimal amount of service is making more money. So there's a distance out of to, to improve things. Um, with the abundance model bringing in, you know, multiple lines into the community, that, that resolves. And then the economic impact, I think, is the last piece of this, is, is under the scarcity model, the economic impact of the network services as well. And as you noted, these applications are no longer sitting on laptops and servers and closets. They're moving to cloud-based and remote services. So the model's changing. But anyways, I just finally got that out of my head and put it on paper after driving lots of.
Well, I'm getting a fifty, I made. For what? So the person you were talking about is spending for a gig. You know, and that's, that's because supply there. You know, there's not enough supply here, so there's a man time on the, that I have to pay.
It's that and the delivery method, but we're working on that too, which, and the ultimate is to get fiber to as many households as possible. So that's what all this really tees up and, and, as, you know, was mentioned by Emily, and, and this is really a piece of the puzzle. But let's, let's build beyond that when the interceptors dollars come, um, probably twenty twenty four. Uh, those will be largely allocated to broadband. So we know it's not the last time we're going to see broadband money. But the problem is we wait until then to do our middle mile, that's all we're doing. And, and what we want to do is get this in the hands of the consumers, both the business consumers and the actual population. So we've been working in parallel across with our existing providers. They've already committed and are building downtowns, um, and I've been working with the town council a lot, about in the planning department there to make sure that we can get the easiest low hanging fruit fiber to the premise in the Pedosha area that Pedosha proper, um, done first because it's cheapest because it's aerial pole lines, although they have its own issues that we had to work on as far as, you know, their desire to vary a lot of that in the future. But then they've already committed to, um, uh, one of our providers to providing, um, in Pedosha Lakes, which is somewhat down, a lot of this actually counted, um, for what's called ARDOF a year, a year ago, to where they're committed by twenty twenty six to build fiber, they committed to the fiber model. They could have done a different, like a wireless model, but they, even though they were visionary, so they're wireless company there. But they're migrating themselves to a full fiber model and really everybody is. So even like Ronnie's house by, I think, damn near next summer, your house will probably be, have the availability of fiber to the premise. And it'll be closer to that pricing that he mentioned, but it won't fully achieve that until we have our middle mile to get the price per megabit coming into the, the county well less than a dollar per meg. Uh, and then they can actually have it so cheap that they can sell it to you for that much. Because it's just, it's like popcorn in a movie theater at that point. It's, it really doesn't toss them up to anything. Vanvo is not inherently expensive, it's the transport to get it here. Um, and so, um, one thing that I was going to mention too, as far as the other building and the infrastructure dollars, is actually a large portion of that that's coming down was actually dedicated, I think fifteen billion dollars nationwide. Um, forty billion was more for middle mile and other infrastructure last model projects and that'll come. And, and we'll probably, you know, I'm not going to say we're going to ask you because I don't know how they're going to deliver it. They may give you life of our own, I mean, they may just, I have no idea. They may do it at the state level that we have to go ask for it. We don't know yet. Uh, but fifteen billion of that, apart from the forty billion that will be more for infrastructure projects is for the replacement of the EBB program, which is now called the Affordable Connectivity Fund. And so that is actually when we talk about affordability to, um, you say, okay, well, this is all great. But how are the people of Archuleta County, and that's the eventual goal, is to get out to not just, you know, Pedosha Lakes and Pedosha proper, but maybe work with La Pata Electric that we're continuing to do, saying, well, they're the ones that have the poles and go to the people. How do we get fiber to their house or something like that where, and then how can they afford it? How can they even afford sixty to a hundred dollars or whatever they're going for it is? Well, some of them may not be able to, but there's this program that's built into that same infrastructure fund that allows, I think right now, up to fifty dollars, um, is what they're talking about, and a computer if they don't have one, you know, that type of thing, to help, you know, the lower income folks that qualify for it, um, the, the lower threshold to be able to afford the same level to bridge the digital divide and bring everybody up to an even playing field as far, as far as what they have access to. And then for Archuleta County to have the access truly for everyone. So not only to have it there, I mean, you can't give an EBB fund or an, or a stipend for something that doesn't exist. So first and foremost, we're trying to get it there and then there's also programs to make it so, you know, everyone can afford it. So there is as little of digital divide as possible.
So the unique opportunity here, and like Emily said, with four partners together, to get something done that we can have within arms and people in control to use, do it state, state funding, that was a unique opportunity. It is an opportunity. So, so if you guys choose to participate, the other three partners will jump in, we'll do a deal in terms of the deal or what we're talking of and kind of get on a number of, if not, we'll look for the next opportunity, but, uh, th- those come only every so often.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think we, uh, financially, we can participate in this as I would. Try to leverage that, we're just going to lose, we'll lose a percentage of whatever we're going to get out of this.
By being an equal partner, you also gain revenue activity off of the twenty seven line. You don't have the lease revenue off of that, which will also assist our broadband office and businesses.
I'm, I'm in favor of the MOU, um, in my, in my opinion. If this was a business meeting or anything, I would encourage to move on with this. And we got, you need to have this signed by when, the fourth?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're developing the application. So I've written about half of what the application will be for Villa. La Pata County will be the sponsor to Villa. Knowing that, that if you guys decide to proceed, I'll continue writing the application and working with Laura at the recent time, preparing La Pata County to put the application in. Immediately once we put the application in, that, that'll go through a couple of months of review approvals. But we'll immediately have the four partners meet and start to talk about the logistics, the financing, the operations, all the pieces that we project have. We've got ideas around that. Um, but the first thing is to, to get in through the line and have the community and the four partners to, to make the project happen. Um, that's a unique opportunity. None of the communities can do it themselves.
Yeah, our next opportunity to make a decision on this is on the third. Um, that's what I can.
So let's do what we got to do. Maybe I'll, the Villa will push, you know, try to get us some time. May first is the application date for Villa. I can't speak for Villa, but I intend to influence some of this time. If you guys think this is a supportable project, um, it would be helpful to, to understand where you guys sit, what your thinking is. By the way, we have some time and then, you know, kind of crumble. I understand you can't make a decision in this forum, but I think I understand.
But I have my opinions and I can express my opinions and I think it's possible.
So I think it's important to, to say that, I think there's a perception that I don't support this and that's not a fact. I can tell you at my house, I give a whopping ten point six download and a zero point seven upload. Of all of the broadband improvement we've done, it's done. Of all of the broadband improvement we've done, it's done me zero good person. But from a broad perspective, we need this as a community. I think it's also important that, as I read the treasury report, it wasn't specifically for broadband, it was for housing. Broadband, food, underserved areas.
His priority is broadband.
So all of these topics, all of them, not just one, all of them. And I think it's important that we're good stewards of this money. The money doesn't have to be spent today, it could be, uh, up to twenty twenty-four? Is, is my understanding. I support this. I sat on the CDC by choice, because I wanted to, and I still want to, because I realized the value of being able to diversify our economy and to be able to bring businesses into our community and what it takes to bring businesses. My whole concern was being hit at the middle of our budgetary year and have no, there, this was not planned out. Yes, we do have funds. Would we better, be better off as a community to keep those in case? I don't know. I don't know, but as the steward of your money, the citizens' money, I think we need to be wise in how we spend money, when we spend money. Should we save some for a rainy day? That's it. This is undoubtedly a once in, who knows how many years opportunity to be a part of this program. And I think this is a great idea. But I'm telling you that I've had some angst in going over this because it was not planned out. We could not know of it in advance, because we just, we didn't know what we didn't know. So I think that, and I don't want to speak for my fellow commissioners, but if we aren't losing sleep about these kinds of decisions for our community with your money, then we shouldn't be in this job. We should bite our nails, we should chew our lip that this is a hard decision, because it's your money, it's our money collectively. And I think it's important that this is how decisions are made, is that there is discussion, that there is the opportunity that we consider all points that are being presented. And I think if we don't support this, as in years of past, in my opinion, Archuleta County has failed to invest in our own future, in our own community. And that's why we're so far behind today in nearly every field we look at. And this is what's been dropped at the feet of this board, is to try to bring us to a point where we are almost even, keeping our head above water. And we've spent a lot of money. But this is where we are, and these opportunities won't come along every day. But these are difficult decisions that should be taken to heart, and I believe they are taken to heart. And so, I personally would support this move, but not without a lot of difficulty for those reasons.
Yeah, I think after our meeting last week with Derek and Gordon, you know, my first comment to the town manager was, to Commissioner Brown's point, was how much money we've already given to broadband and, and the concerns I had for that, but, um, like, I understand the importance of this project and the fact that it's not gonna come out again for thousands of money. So, I think, you know, my opinion would be, I would have to support it, and, you know. I've got a lot of thinking since last week, was it Tuesday we had a meeting, Wednesday?
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of thoughts about it since. Good to hear. As I said, multiple thousands of them, it could affect, and for the long term, I think it's a good project.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, uh, the importance of this is, is huge. I know there's a limited amount of money, but, you know, if you look at private enterprise and the way government works, really make the difference between this, you don't see connection. Okay, so what I'm saying is, if we move on this, we're gonna be able to work a lot faster, get more done. But government moves a lot slower than this fiber does. And if we're gonna sit back with nobody for CDOs to make up their mind, or for the state to hand out more transportation, or communication, or infrastructure money, we're gonna do right alone. I don't think this commission will see it. You know, um, we have a huge opportunity, Michael Whiting, back in the day was, he, he was the starter on this, one of the starters on it, to, to help promote it, to get going, for us to get involved in this. Um, my knowledge that I gained, I see the huge importance of this getting done. Um, I'm, I'm just glad to hear that you guys are not, uh, in your opinion, opposed to this idea.
Thanks, I can appreciate the love of your support. I appreciate honestly the issues that you're going as public officials. I have done months of work to try to carefully align the partners to, to put this thing together. The fact that they're pretty close to walking in parallel is a unique moment. The funding is there. Um, and, uh, I, I hope, like hell, we can get this thing done. It's an opportunity, it's, it's not the end of the road. If we can't get this one done, some other pitch ends up in, in the process. So be able to recalibrate and start again.
There's a lot of pivoting that goes on in, uh, broadband reasonable work, but this is a good one. How do you assess?
Just, since, the, the project will hinge on the DOLA matching, correct? So that DOLA doesn't come through the project's basic going to.
DOLA will go through a review process. So the first thing is a sanity check, um, because that's a subject matter experts. I'll be excluded from that, because it kind of, the project is. Um, and then it goes to the DOLA managers for review, for their support, from the social assets of Patrick and Greg and, uh, the folks in DOLA. I verified that it shouldn't be approved, there is eligible funding that could be applied to the project. So that's a big piece, whether or not they have money. Um, then it goes to full EIAF committee, um, for their approval, and also the executive director for signature. So, it's got a road ahead, but this is the enabling step, is to get four partners truly committed, um, bring the application to them, start that process in parallel, work out all the four corners of our, our homework.
To, to cut to the chase, so basically, if the county committed five hundred thousand, it really be conditioned upon the DOLA approval?
Oh, yeah, so there's no dollar move until the contract is presented to La Plata County, as the sponsor, you know, carrying the DOLA piece. That's months away. Um, and in the MOU, there was one that we put out in early eight, and it gives, um, there, there's language that's appended to that, that, that this is non-binding, that we are trying to make the project happen, this is elective participation. Um, no one's asked for a check. And so we get through all this process.
So we could do that if they approved it later this year.
We're asking them to move quickly, but in context, but we, it's, it's a much longer than ours, so.
But we could, I mean, conceivably, even if it got late in our, we have a building season that restricts us a lot of fiber installs, especially up here at this part of the county. Uh, and that's why CDO has to spread that over two seasons when they go to the Wolf Creek, uh, because they even have a shorter season up there. Uh, but down in that part from Natio to Arby as well, I mean, if it gets approved in it, not till, you know, October, if there's a lineup of, you know, the, the, if they could have, if they have a, a availability of, uh, personnel and material, then, you know, that, you know, especially going aerially, there's a lot to do even up until, you know, November, December, depending on, uh, whether you're not trying to get as much of any of it, I don't think any of those into the ground, so.
So each of the partners have their, their sets of responsibilities and, and different gifts to the project, really. Um, we're asking La Plata Electric to make ready on the poles, anticipate the design work, and all that, all the technical stuff there. We're asking the Southern East to help with the land perfection, you know, different portions go to different places, tribal lands. Uh, we're asking La Plata County to help with the land perfection, um, that, that'll come here as well to some degree. Uh, we've asked La Plata for fiber around town to get over to where we need CDO to go east, you know, heading over the pass. So, there's a lot of pieces to this project, but heading that line in place is the, the missing link around the ring. And as it just transits through the creative industry area, it's stable, just weeks ago identified, final, right, and that's under NASS. So it has this kind of, what we like to think. But as far as the financing, um, we got this.
And so I think it'll be well available to be able to spend that and allocate it before the, I think it's actually twenty twenty-four December. It has to be committed by, and it has to be spent by twenty twenty-six, but this is, I mean, we don't want to do that long. I mean, we put it up as soon as possible, so this is gonna help within that. Um, thank you commissioners for discussing your support, and, and also I wanted to let you know that a lot of the work that you have done, that you have supported through the CDC and just the commissioner group together, um, with the monies you've allocated to the CDC, and our efforts have led, 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 or led up to this and made it possible. So you, you know, should be committed for that foresight and that previous work that we've done, like, really the last four years, it's the major amount of effort that's ever gone into broadband. And we wouldn't be able to do this, A, without those previous efforts. It wouldn't be possible. We would be so far behind. We'd be like a few unfortunate other communities in western Colorado that are just now starting to think about that. Um, Rio Blanco and, and Delte Montrose thought about it in more two thousand fifteen, so they put up some, and they had monies that were available in different ways, but they got those same DOL grants that we're actually going after now, they're back in two thousand fifteen. If you see the results, the average in both of the, the, the MLAB results for their, you know, average broadband is closer to fifty by fifty across the entire counties in both of those locations, because it's been seven years that they put in this infrastructure investment. So we're a little bit behind them, but we're not as far behind us in other communities as we did start it. Um, and the, one of the things that we did is we worked with La Plata Electric a lot, and so I've been pushing them for three years now to enact, um, the SB one oh seven on their, their, their right-of-way on aerial lines. If they hadn't have done that, we hadn't already done that work to try to get our other wolf from middle mile that we have out there for review right now, to get that moved done, then I don't know that they would have the mechanism to do the, even the hanging of the poles all the way through.
So La Plata Electric, um, passed a resolution in October, November, with less call, that, that said they wanted to participate in, in improving broadband for their rate fares. And they were looking for opportunities, ways to do that. As your application developed, and I helped, just guidance on that, the participation with La Plata Electric were pretty important. That, that helped a lot. They were already doing things in a couple areas, but they didn't know that the results are what's possible. They kind of knew they were moving in that direction. When your application came around, I think that's what affects the PDA's minds, to put the end terms. Um, and then this was definitely an effort of that, the willingness to work with us. Um, I've met with them over and over, and, um, this leverages infrastructure. They've got in town, there's a substation on the west side, west side of town they look to reach. Um, they've got the pole routes, and, um, anyways, a bunch of the pieces are on the table, that are tasked to put together. So thanks for this, thanks piece of it.
So basically, we're just earmarking this way. Okay, and going in with this MOU will show that we have financial support to do so. The other part is, is, you know, uh, more infrastructure money has been set to become a melody pipe. If this fails, we'll have that five hundred, still to do more. But if the other infrastructure comes out, then we'll, we'll have the opportunity to do even better. This five hundred thousand, it's not coming out of our general fund. So, I'd rather have it earmarked set aside than having to look for it in our general fund to find out how we can come up with this so we don't miss this opportunity. That's, that's my whole idea of that. You know? It has been a long time coming.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your dedication to our community as well, and, and to the betterment of our community. And, uh, thank you for considering this on the line and supporting it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Don't forget to Jackson, take a five minute break.
Thank you.
So, uh, we don't.
It's a very good question.
Yeah, it's a funny question.
So, uh, before, you said, here on campus?
We're trying to make this a first state. So I can get that.
Okay.
I'm having a flex, and you're still on the table. He's one of the, really, I don't know.
You don't make that touch party for me.
Yeah.
This is the last.
Oh, she brought it to me. Okay. I'll count them later, and figure it out.
Yes. Yeah. They're trading through that. Just a little time, but I can't. You guys. Thank you. We're gonna walk a little bit.
Give me.
Taking your seats.
I think we have more seats now.
I can't sit, though, still.
Thanks for being here.
I hope it's okay. I just sent in to try to help. Because you, or phrases that I would bring. And so I'm just trying to make it, I guess, easier to understand the layers. He's here, just as I came in, he's starting, I don't know if you know, he's starting, uh, health department. So, I got a whole side.
Check them.
Whatever, whatever it's like. He's just arts letterer, so he also sits on the board, but he's not here as a board. Anyway, well, um, he had reached out to me a few weeks ago, said, you might need that. And I said, I'm interested in that, I think you might be.
That's how they are.
So, just to clarify. Of course.
They're, they're very different scenes. By loading that pretty quick.
So it sounds like I'm about ten years old. You know, I was, I used to work in my mother's. We ploddered around, trying to, but yeah, for once, it was always very interesting.
Can you say we know that?
Because we, there was people here who seemed. They're kind of like. We see. I bet you that you have one for, but it's. It's a very different, like, it's always helps. Yeah. Uh, they're just, yeah, it's interesting, interesting to the world. Very.
Thank you, thank you.
This is what my allergies like kicks in, I feel. Boy.
I didn't see something from dark in here that looks like.
No, I saw something outside. No, I actually didn't.
We'll scoot back and the boys can sit here because they're about to get off their seat for this. No. Um, Dwight is. And Mary Beth.
This is a. Sit down.
Yeah, and we're gonna take Mary Beth too.
Yeah, you can sit where we were sitting.
Okay, we'll take Mary Beth. Okay.
Good morning. Morning, morning.
I don't know if you guys trying to figure out stuff like that.
Wait, you said you.
We're easy compared to that.
Yeah, I can.
Great. Move on with the citizens concerned regarding San Juan Basin public health. Citizens are up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for agreeing to meet with us. They're both our concern and our ideas for solutions. Today we want to share with you a vision for healthcare in Archuleta County. First, let me introduce our small little panel here. Three of us moved here from other Colorado towns and one of us from all over, but most recently Arizona. I think all of us would agree that we all got here to this town through divine intervention. My name is Shady Zoradi. I'm a mother of four beautiful, healthy children. My husband and I moved here from Evergreen, Colorado almost three years ago. I've been practicing massage and bodywork for twenty years and currently I'm getting my, uh, getting certified in holistic nutrition. Will be integrating that into the ways I help people in their health and wellness. You all have met Mary Beth Snyder. Uh, she served as the secretary of the health district investigative committee at the end of last year. She's a retired small business owner, a fourteen year geriatric and hospice nurse and a board member for an important local nonprofit. Catherine Reiden Howard, Howard, Howard is a retired battalion chief from Aurora Fire Department and has lived here since two thousand and ten. She volunteered with Pagosa Fire for five years and was a hospice, uh, volunteered for hospice for three. Catherine was a command officer, the chief in charge of Aurora's fire EMS division and is a nationally recognized instructor. Dwight Bellhauer devoted thirty years serving as a Christian adult education and music director, fifteen years of which were as a pastor. He has a twenty-five year career in financial management and investment. He is a published author, having contributed to many Christian works. And I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Thanks, Shireen. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, we're here today because we know we have a common concern in C A R, and that's for the healthcare of everyone in our community, this one thing we all share. And so we're just here to talk to you about that today. Primarily the purpose and goal is, is this, to encourage you to do something that you, I know you've already talked about quite a bit, to complete the investigative committee's work by forming perhaps a smaller task force. To look at areas where they had completed their work, to do a cost analysis for, for forming our own county health department. So the main objective, uh, in SB here today is to encourage you to establish a local health department, uh, to more effectively preserve and protect the public's health by improving things in the following four areas. And the presenters here in front there will be speaking on these four areas. First of all, education, in health preparedness, in health transparency and communication. And then also management of a new healthcare department. Uh, we'll also, after that, be sharing a few, uh, Mary Beth has some information on some demographic information that you might find useful. And then we'll just close it up and open up to your questions and comments. I think the next speaker, uh, use Castorit.
Good morning.
Next slide, please.
Good morning. Thank you so much. I'll tell you, today's been a real eye opener of the depth of issues just today, holy hell. And, but what I really can tell is how each one of you cares so much about our community. And that really, really shows too. So thank you. So I'm gonna talk about illness prevention, the first two bullet points, basically healthy lifestyles, therapeutics, treatment in terms of education. With the recent pandemic, um, which has affected every life, not only in our county, but across the world as we know. The media in San Juan Basin's sole focus was on the vaccine, not on how to prevent and treat the virus. There are many time-tested, science-based and peer-reviewed studies on simple, effective and safe tools to prevent and treat COVID. As well as other respiratory viruses such as a foundation is really vitamin C, vitamin D three and zinc. And everything I studied and everything that's out there, that seems to be, um, really the basic tools. There's also things with nebulizing and many other supplements which have been proven to reduce symptoms and prevent them. Instead of just a vaccine-only approach. And I want you to know not anti-vaccines. When I was the EMS chief in, in, for Aurora, I was in charge of our shots for tots program. So I definitely understand, um, the importance of, of those kinds of programs. So complementary modalities such as educating our public about how to prevent the disease in the first place is critical. And many in our community have opted to use them and very successfully and, um, very successfully have not had. I just want to briefly mention the criticality of vitamin D three. I'd love to give you an information, an info mission on D three. How important it is to our health, especially when six months out of the year, no one in our region gets the light amount of sunshine. No matter, you could stay outside all day for six months of the year, but the latitude line of, uh, line of Georgia, none of us are getting the right kind of sunshine that will be able to synthesize within our bodies. And D three is just, uh, critical, very well studied and well documented. And especially its proven effects on COVID. Numerous studies have shown that adequate levels of vitamin D three significantly reduces ICU admission and death from COVID. Over the last two years, there's been multiple studies stating that if people had adequate levels of the D three, they could have prevented between sixty and ninety percent of all COVID deaths. Now, why aren't we being informed of that? This isn't just an opinion. These are real studies by doctors that are, you know, that are really caring about their communities. The benefits of higher levels of D three are numerous and vital. Even in cancer, they're saying, for example, breast cancer, if women, which affects one out of seven or eight women these, um, these days, there, where's the education that adequate levels of D three can protect them? Anywhere from status show between sixteen and sixty percent. That's the kind of education that I, we all believe should be added to our community. And let alone the other things that are simple, safe and expensive, like the vitamin C and the zinc. The supplements that are effective to boost our natural immunity and we're not hearing about those from our health professionals currently. There is overwhelming evidence and systematic review showing that D three alone is a clear winner in assisting COVID patients. And we know that our high-risk patients, especially the elderly and people of color because of the skin pigmentation issues, are, 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 are also our community that has the lowest levels of this. Another safe and well-established, simple, uh, way to prevent viruses, especially respiratory virus, viruses is gargling, uh, and cleaning the nasal cavity. All sciences know that respiratory viruses, and specifically the Delta variant, replicates rapidly in our nose and mouth for three to five days before it affects the rest of our body. There are very simple ways that we can educate people on just the health strategy of an oral rinse and gargle and a nasal rinse, doing it one or two times a day could help us all reduce, um, our infections, even the common cold. It seems reasonable and common sense to many in our community that any health department that wants to serve as a frontline defense against health emergencies would consider all therapeutics and all educational means and natural effective remedies relying, rather than relying on big pharma and vaccines alone. If they were truly focused on serving the population. It appears that San Juan Basin spent six hundred thousand dollars on advertising the vaccine. Now, I don't know about you, but I saw advertising absolutely every possible format that you and I access every day. We would ask if that money could have been better spent on identifying those simple and safe strategies to keep and also that are highly effective that, um, in combating the disease in the first place. When it comes to program and materials specific to our county needs, is our community different than La Plata County? In demographics, in politics, in, in location and things of that nature? Is San Juan Basin specifically addressing our own needs? Later, Mary Beth will share some pertinent stats with you. And I ask if we who live and are invested in Archuleta County could do better with education and outreach, um, and customizing programs for our community. And I'm gonna give you an example of three programs that are not currently being addressed. One, fall and injury prevention for our elderly. These are simple, well-established programs. We could be at our own health department to be coordinating throughout the county to really keep this community as safe as possible because we do have an aging population here. Two, programs that address special needs for children and adults. We do have certain programs here, but we don't have a coordinating effort being done. A friend of, of ours that has an autistic child is literally ever within trying to find appropriate assistance and it's hard for him. Three is realistic resources for those who live in the remote regions of the county. Our geographics have big implications on our community as you all are very well aware. One is that we are basically isolated in cases of natural and man-made disasters. Whether it be flooding, avalanches, wildfires, mudslides was, um, mentioned earlier and Lord knows we could all use the rain. We all like that rain to come. Um, but can we increase our ability to assist those living remotely to survive when being cut off from our normal services? And we think we can present programs that would be vital to those, to that population. And let me give you an example that relates, uh, here. If we have a major fire in town, our nearest mutual aid is, uh, Upper Pine, which is Bayfield. They are forty-five minutes away. If they can immediately jump in that engine and come here, when they do, they bring one engine with three or four people. Sometimes a command officer will accompany them. That is only if they are not on another call. That is only if whatever's affecting us isn't affecting them. But that is our nearest mutual aid for just fires in this county. Okay? And so how does that work when we're having our own natural or man-made disasters such as a hazmat spill or anything? What does that response look like to get us here? And you guys know this much more, much better than me than I do. You know, one of our goals is that we should be more self-reliant, um, and self-governing on these issues. We believe that custom and Archuleta County-specific programs, um, that are based on strengthening our community part, our community partnerships with the hospital, with EMS, with, um, the emergency operations center, with all the healthcare providers, assisted living communities, the school district, um, the Southern Youth Tribe, obviously childcare, to put it, to help us have that umbrella to help us specifically meet their health needs. And who better than our own talent to take care of our own and take responsibility of our urgent issues? The data-driven risk benefit analysis for all prescribed treatments. I want to just briefly mention, um, uh, well, actually I'll get into that later. But we could have a health board that looks at all genuine science and peer-reviewed studies and keeps updated on the risk, not just accept one line of thinking. In regards to the pandemic studies, the outcomes have shown that communities and countries that protected their most vulnerable populations, such as the elderly, relatives of health disabilities and immunocompromised have fared the best. On the fire ground, as an incident commander, I performed risk benefit analysis one hundred percent of the time. That was my job. And every single emergency was different. Every single fire was different. By having our own health board, again, focused on Archuleta County, we can continually perform that risk benefit analysis on our community, on our programs and make adjustments necessary in real time, much quicker than we could now to protect our own county and not be the smaller piece of the pie like we are now. Informed consent. Uh, this is especially in regards to the COVID vaccine. Even the National Institute of Health, the National Library of Medicine produced a report in essence saying this. Patient comprehension is a critical part of meeting medical ethics standards. And that in the COVID vaccine trials, that adequate patient comprehension of risk essentially did not occur. In other words, informed consent was not, was not handled well then, nor has it been handled well while administering the vaccine. With this new and often controversial treatment, how many of us were fully made aware of the potential adverse outcomes? Informing can, consent is an important part of ensuring we are protecting our constitutional rights. Compliance training. This is in references to, um, the business and, and businesses and entities that must be evaluated and inspected by the health department to ensure safety and compliance with state and national standards. These entities are food, restaurants, nursing homes, uh, healthcare, healthcare providers, in-home healthcare, assisted living, I mean, everything. But so put a locally focused health department, need, needs of our health and business partners better. We can have more closer connections to them and be able to train, uh, to help train them to ensure compliance and to be there to assist them when needs arise on an immediate basis. Food establishments such as restaurants, which we know are a very vital part of our economy. Are required certain health inspections, not only to get a license, but to keep it through regular interval of inspections, anywhere from two years to, uh, six months to two years. Our group has been made aware by local restaurant owner owners that some are highly dissatisfied with current practices. To be fair, others are satisfied. So we're not here to bash San Juan Basin. We're here to say, you know, can we do this better? But we wanted to share with you these concerns because we had heard complaints such as unprofessional, uh, conduct and not being knowledgeable in industry standards, as well as being unwilling to educate and work with business owners on how to be compliant in a timely manner. One concern restaurant owner was threatened by health inspector to shut down the business. Yet, this owner had not seen an inspector in over two years. Can we do better for our community by assisting all of these entities from healthcare to food service comply with our very important, you know, state, national standards because our local health department would care enough about them to educate and train them and work with them and build, and build true. and work with them and build, and build true positive relationships. And from what we're being told, many of these entities are fearful to complain because they fear retaliation. And that's what we've heard. By employing dedicated locals who have taken ensuring our safe eating, our living, safe living conditions, and promoting healthy living, we can perform specific outreach and services to not only our businesses, but our community members. So the question is today, can we do better by creating our own health department? Can we build more trusting and lasting relationships and partnerships with all of our community leaders that I mentioned to better serve this county? We believe it is imperative to explore this option with all the positives it could bring, be realistic with any of the negatives, and have one common goal. And that is invest in and make our county as healthy and safe as possible. Thank you very much.
Okay, next screen here. We're going to talk a little bit about improved preparedness. I think we can do a better job of that as well. And that would include additional healthcare and in-home care plans when the medical system is overburdened. We've experienced this. Provide contingent additional healthcare services in emergency situations. Customize, so I guess you could say. Provide additional medical equipment, supplies, and protection to armed healthcare providers for home bathroom outpatient care. And cooperate with the school district to avoid school closures by doing risk analysis. So preparedness really is defined to make ready beforehand, to procure ahead of time, to work out the details of and plan in advance. I mean, she talked a little bit about the what ifs. What if there was a wildfire and this whole ballot was filled with smoke? And we have these people living in remote places who already have breathing problems? Who's going to go find them and make sure they're okay? I mean, what if there was a long-lasting power outage? We've got that same problem with people that use electricity for medical reasons. What if there was an epidemic? Imagine that. I think we could do a better job of preparing for what's needed in real time rather than waiting. At one point in time, I cried out for help with people who were sick at home and got no attention from San Juan Basin Health. So I'm thinking that planning and procurement and preparedness is how we would also protect the health of this community. We could identify the vulnerable in advance, know where they are, have equipment, medications, source options, volunteer lists, and be ready to go and save lives. Not everybody's going to show up to the medical center, and it doesn't have room for everybody anyway. So I think we could do a better job, more than just conceptual plans, an actual boot-on-the-ground preparation. Because who do we call when this all falls apart? It's not San Juan Basin. I tried that already. Okay, I think that's an area, so.
Sherry Lee has got to make a slide.
Is she? Okay.
Well, I'm going to be talking about transparency and communication. I believe the root of our societal problems stems from our inability to have civil discourse, public debate, and free exchange of ideas. Without it, though, we aren't able to arrive at truth or science or solutions. It's been painfully challenging to have civil conversations about important issues with each other with how politicized and polarized these are. And depending on where you get your news and your facts, you truly are living in different worlds. I mean, truly. This is especially true when it comes to our relationship with our public health department and the people that they serve. I would especially say between San Juan Basin and Archuleta County. Just last week, Leanne Jones reported to you all a survey that indicated that people in the medical field feel threatened by people who speak out against their narrative and their medical recommendations. And therefore, they need better training to respond to political conflict. She feels misinformation is to blame. I'm wondering if she believes people aren't smart enough to discern and decide what is best for themselves, to choose with their own free will what goes into their body. Compliance would be so much easier if they could just dictate what they want us to do. Never mind, we actually look at the evolving science. What's interesting to me, though, is the lack of transparency and communication coming from San Juan Basin Public Health, not to mention the misinformation they themselves have put out. They have done a poor, poor job answering our questions or addressing our concerns publicly. I would love to see a survey that asks the public if they feel safe or if they trust their medical establishments now. I bet many citizens feel just as bullied and ostracized as the healthcare workers do. We've all been subject to coercion and dishonesty. But the real problem is when people refuse to go to the doctor or hospital when they need to because they don't trust it. Truth plus transparency equals trust. Transparency and communication is critical. San Juan Basin Health thinks we should just blindly trust them because they declare themselves arbiters of truth and champions of science. The conflict of interest between governmental health agencies and Big Pharma along with mainstream media that makes up our health apparatus has done a great deal these past many years, which has absolutely been brought to the light by this pandemic. It has earned the distrust of anyone who is actually paying attention. If Archuleta County could create our own health department, we would have the ability to track our own services, to produce our own records, and to use that data to inform ourselves about what our specific needs are. We wouldn't have to rely on the district department to send the information to us like we do now. In fact, the Health District Investigative Committee asked the health department during their research, and San Juan Basin was only able to provide 10 of the 35 questions they asked. That's less than 29% of the questions were answered. We would know exactly how our money is, what our money is going into, what services, and exactly how many people were served, and exactly how each policy and procedure were being performed. Not only that, but we could track disease trends and break through infection more closely and lawfully report on adverse events, which, by the way, are huge indicators for whether the novel vaccines are truly safe and effective. By having our own health department, our board and medical staff they oversee would be residents of the town they serve. They would have more direct contact with members of our own community and have a more vested interest in the quality of their services. They would be more apt to address our local issues. No longer outsourcing all of our services to outsiders, we could produce a more focused and customized plan to fit our demographics and community needs. We could provide stable jobs and be better partners in health if we had our own department. And we could rebuild trust by having better communication and more transparency.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. I'm going to share with you some thoughts and information on improved health care management. First, bullet point, there is a selection of health board members by the elected county commissioners. And I put up a reference to their Colorado Revised Statutes 25-1-508 in the sub-paragraphs. I'm aware of the fact that, and the investigative committee was made aware of the fact as well, that in November of 2020, a request was made by the commissioners of both Laclada County and here in Archuleta County to amend the procedures by which health board members were selected. And the request was that the Archuleta County and Laclada County commissioners would be the ones who would select those individuals. I think Commissioner Brown, you weren't yet serving the Board of Commissioners at that time, but the other two were, I believe. That's when we were kind of moving into the area ourselves. That was rejected by the attorney for Laclada County, I believe, was the one, along with other resolutions that were submitted. In fact, all that and all of the other resolutions were rejected. Saying they were contrary to state statutes, which was accurate, as I reviewed it myself.
Just to be clear, was San Juan Basin Public Health attorney not the one?
Oh, it was. It wasn't the one. Okay, I stand corrected on that.
It was number 227, I think the resolution was.
I don't get that.
But currently, that is who it was, the board members. It is Archuleta County Commissioner and Laclada County Commissioner.
That was a resolution that was rejected.
No, they were.
In a health.
Just to be.
What they rejected was alternates. When there's a regional health board, there's actually an appointment committee that appoints the members to the Board of Health. That appointment committee is made up of the Archuleta County Commissioner and Laclada County Commissioner. And that's set in state law.
Yes.
Just those two people.
Those two commissioners, not all the commissioners.
Right, it says those two that serve on the board.
And that's the point that I want to make.
I just want to clarify what the actual structure is.
Yeah, because the important point, I think, with all of this, if the resolution requested that all of the commissioners from both counties select the members of the Health District Board, that is not allowed by state statute. Right. What is allowed by state statute is when we have our own health department, those selections to the county health board are made by you three commissioners. And so if that is something that was desired to be done back in November of 2020, and perhaps by other commissioners who served before you gentlemen did, that is something that we certainly would be able to accomplish. And I think we want elected officials to make decisions on board membership. And that's far preferable to just an internal committee with, it only is composed of a couple of commissioners from both counties. It's far preferable that we have you as our elected representatives select those who are serving on the county Board of Health. The second bullet point, select board members invested in our unique community, county needs, who will also protect our constitutional rights. We want health members on the board who know our county's needs. And I just don't see how we're, with, a lot of that was mentioned by the other speakers already. San Juan Basin Health just is not that in tune to what our county needs are. And we've seen through this presentation from the others here how they have failed in that regard. So local people would be most familiar with our local needs. We want individuals also who have a high and healthy respect for our constitution, American history, and follow those rights and privileges that are spelled out to us, that are constitution, that are God-given rights. We want to develop and exercise policies that are respectful of those rights and freedoms because in the age in which we live now, we see nationwide, in many states and many different counties, how these rights and privileges that are guaranteed us through the constitution are being challenged. And the desire is to replace it with something else. And so we want the board members who have a devoted, healthy interest in keeping the rights and privileges spelled out in the constitution, active and faithful to those rights for all the citizens of our county. It would also bring health board jobs into our community. As of the investigative report that you received, they discovered that, at that time, that San Juan Basin Health had 91 employees in their health department. Do you know how many individuals in that health department were residents of Archuleta County? Do you know?
Less than five.
At the time that the investigative committee received the information, too.
When was that, pardon?
Okay, that's, that's in the new information.
Two and a half.
So I think it's important that we ask ourselves as citizens of the county, residents of the county, as commissioners, serving the county's needs, how in the world can the needs of our county be recognized and met properly when only two employees or under five, whatever it may be now, are serving in that capacity in the district health department? When we have our own health department and board at the county level, we can employ individuals from our county. 100% of them will be aware of our county needs and serving the residents according to those needs being guided by our county commissioners. That is tremendously powerful and necessary for helping the people in this county if we keep things the way they are. Not only as representative levels on the board with, Mr. Schop, you're serving as the only member on the board along with one other individual from Archuleta County, and then the limited number of employees.
There's two people.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You and one other.
No, myself and two others.
Two others, okay. That, and also with the number of employees in the district, that limited number of individuals will always be in existence. We will never be able to accurately address the needs or express ourselves freely in this district health board. We will never be able to establish local control and serving locally the needs of the residents here. There are so many advantages to having our own health board, and that's why so many other counties even in the state are looking at removing themselves from district arrangements and setting up their own county boards. We would be well-served when we do the same thing ourselves here in Archuleta County. Bullet point number three, established optional programs and policies offered to the public. If you go on the website for the San Juan Basin Health Department, they have, if you go up to the right column and click on the About Us section, when you look at how they describe what the purpose of the district health department and the board is, they give a pretty accurate summary of taking the Colorado Revised Statutes and boiling it down to just a couple sentences as to what their responsibilities are. And it reads as follows. The health boards involved in administering and enforcing public health laws, rules, orders, and standards of the state, as well as orders and rules set by the Board of Health itself. So that's pretty accurate in summation of what Colorado Revised State Statutes require of them as a district department. And the same requirements would be for us as a county health department with our own Board of Health. But that requires that the local departments of health is also concerned about the rights and protections of its residents under the law. It means that they also be careful not to impose excessive restrictions that violate constitutional freedoms and rights, and that they're free to choose optional programs. Now, you all are probably aware of the problems and objections that were raised by people in the community and parents in the community to the Junior Heroes Program when it was presented and kind of, I have to put it this way, it was snuck into the high school without any knowledge of the principal of the high school. There was no knowledge that was given to the superintendent at the time. And it was done without proper information being provided to the parents to offer their consent. That was an optional program that was presented to the San Juan Basin Health Department, and they simply ignored getting permission to present that to the students before it started happening. As a local health board, we'd be able to address those optional programs. As a local health board, we'd be able to address those optional programs at our own level within our own county. There are also greater restrictions that were continued upon our county and also La Plata County, when the governor had basically lifted a lot of his restrictions statewide and left those decisions up to the local health departments. We'd be able to better address that according to the needs during any pandemic situation or other situation, emergency situation, depending on the situation is our own county. But in this case, we had to rely upon even continued excessive requirements and mandates required by the San Juan Basin Health Department, our district. Bullet point four, determine where to allocate health resources and services. The investigative committee received a chart from San Juan Basin Health that indicated how their overall resources are spent. And I just want to briefly show it to you here. You notice this big, in this diagram, this large section here.
There's now?
Yeah, that says salaries and benefits. Do you know what the percentage is?
Need to be percentage?
Yeah, that's right. You're aware of that.
Of 8.6 million, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. 80% of those services go to administration. If a charitable organization were coming to you and asking for your donations to that organization, one of the questions you'd probably ask, and rightly so, I think we probably all got it at one time or another, how much of the money that I give to you will be going toward administration? And if you heard that that charitable organization was going to be spending 80% on administrative costs, I doubt that you'd be very inclined to give to that charity. Having our own local health board, we can control those costs. So much of it right now is completely out of control. In fact, I read what we have. In San Juan Basin Health is a government bureaucracy that's run amok, that is really out of control. We see no separation of costs and services for Archuleta County in spite of the fact that it's been requested over and over and over. A clear, precise, defined presentation of how those expenditures are meeting the needs of Archuleta County residents and how they're being separated out. We've been lost in no explanation for years. And this has gone on with requests even for previous commissioners who have been serving in this county. We need accountability. We need deliberate, clear allocation where our resources are needed. We are not getting that right now, the San Juan Basin Health. And apparently, the concern is, they are not even keeping accurate records at all of these expenses and distinguishing them from La Plata County. So to do it right, it involves local management. We can, we are aware that state statutes require that every five years, health plan for the county or the district that you're in be established and be presented to the state for approval. We can provide our own five-year health plan. We can do that and identify very clearly how those resources are going to be divided up. But right now, we don't have that information. Do residents of Archuleta County even have any input in the direction, in input of programs that are offered? Very little. And, and so when we have our own health board, all of those things can be changed. How can they, when we are in such limited tenure on the board? How, how can the residents of our community provide that information? This is the way it will always be when we, as Archuleta County, serve and are acting in a limited way with representation on this board. A local board and department would have 100% involvement of people within our community. And that's why change must come. The fifth bullet point, act independently or with other counties, challenge unlawful mandates and rules. Now, I know that sounds very controversial. And all of us have been frustrated probably at times with mandates that come out of nationally or statewide or locally through our health district. But we are all obligated as Americans to challenge whatever is unlawful or whatever is in violation of constitutional rights that are God-given rights when we see that happening. Our own department and health board can act independently. They can act in concert, let's say, with other counties that have similar concerns to us when things like this happen. Just as nationally, the Justice Department might challenge a law that is passed by Congress if they feel it's unconstitutional. Just as states do in banding together and challenging federal laws that they feel are unconstitutional. We have an obligation as individual citizens, as commissioners, as, as people in this county to do the same thing when we observe and perceive that rights are being violated that are God-given and that should not be taken away under any circumstances. It's the duty of commissioners, it's the duty of a health department, it's the duty that we see whenever, that should be observed whenever unconstitutional laws have come into existence. Individual citizens, elected officials, and government bodies all have this right in our system of government, whether it be at the federal level, the state level, or the local level. We have that obligation through free speech, through alternate legislation to change legislation that has been passed previously that is not lawful, through citizen initiatives, initiatives both at the local and also at the state level, and/or through the courts. If we feel as individuals or commissioners or as joint measures by counties, we feel somehow those rights are violated, we have an obligation to manage things in such a way, even in healthcare in our county, that those rights are always preserved for our residents in this county. We do not see this at work in our health department in San Juan Basin. In fact, what we see is just the opposite. As was mentioned by the previous speakers, when criticism is offered, it is stifled, it is rejected. It is treated, and they've said it many times, as misinformation in spite of the fact that that information that is being presented to them is based on other clear science by medical professionals and researchers that are well-trained in their fields, but they refuse to accept it and seem more willing to accept not true science, but political science. And we've seen how so many things, especially during this pandemic, have been politicized. For the future, where will we be if we see statutes that we are not comfortable with now and leave them unchallenged in our state? And we see other statutes that are passed, perhaps on gender equality, perhaps on issues related to healthcare and mental health care related to the youngest in our public school systems and primary education, from kindergarten up through third grade? And statutes come into existence that say that we need to have gender education and transgender education to these young children? Are we going to just sit by and say, no, just because it's a statute, we can't challenge it in any way? A health board has a responsibility to look at and see how things like that can affect the children in its community and have an adverse effect and challenge it legally when it's necessary. We're seeing issues come up with infanticide, with late-term abortions, gender and transgender issues. We're sharing of female bathroom facilities and problems that have come up with that in various states around our country. San Juan Basin Public Health seems to have an attitude that whatever is presented in statute, that without any challenge or questioning whatsoever, has to be followed and accepted. We have an obligation, when we feel something is unlawful, is an overreach of our rights, to take that and challenge it by whatever means are available to us. When we have our own health department, we would be much more able to do that. Last point I would like to make, locally address the political and social theories that may adversely influence our healthcare and educational systems. Now, why should we not address this as a local health department? We see in San Juan Basin Health nothing that is ever mentioned on the website, which is a beautiful website. It has a ton of information in it. It was put together very, very well. But there is nothing in there on preservation of freedoms. There is nothing in there that you could find as far as patriotism, love of country, expressions of how we live in a nation where we have been able to develop one of the best healthcare systems in the world. There is no appreciation for that. There is nothing in there about protecting the lives of the unborn and recognizing needs that need to be addressed to their health. What we do see, when you go into their system, is much on American historical injustices, drawn from critical race theory, but little on American equality, but much on equity. A few months ago, I presented to you, and I don't know if you remember it or not, but it was two or three months ago, I believe, where I cited in public comments to the commissioners a section of the news feed that appears on San Juan Basin Health to the communications director of the department. It was a nude feed, if I remember correctly, I'm pretty sure this is right, July 17, 2020. And whether it was directly from the communications director or someone in assistance with that individual, I do not know for sure. But it was there and posted, and it is still there, and posted on the website. But basically, if you go and look at it, you will see that it was stressing the fact that now that the pandemic had lessened at that time in the summer, that it was a time to address some other issues through the health industry. And it was promoting the idea, idea that, very clearly, that America is foundationally and institutionally racist, systemically so. Which means our system of governing has to be replaced with something else. That the founding governments of our nation, or perhaps, I guess we'd have to say, of the state of Colorado, its constitution, are systemically racist and problematic. And that health issues, therefore, in the district, should follow that thinking and be applied accordingly. This is not only dangerous, this is contrary to American principles of freedom, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness that we hold so dear. John Lynn's recent presentation to the commissioners, a week ago today, was especially troubling on some of its points. I didn't know that she was going to be speaking to the commissioners that day. I hadn't seen it, I never felt seeing it on the agenda that was made public. However, I heard that she was speaking to the commissioners, and so I quickly got online and through Zoom was able to catch the last of the presentation. And later on, I went through the slide presentation that was made available. I don't know what you detected there from that presentation from the Director John Lynn, but it was rife with bold socialistic ideology of today, which is based in critical race theory. There were sections of that slide presentation that were very, very troubling in terms of very threatening comments and prosecutorial endangerment to those who would dare challenge anything that was presented, any local health department views and positions, because it made them feel uncomfortable. It made them feel they were being threatened. And so explorations were being made on how to prosecute people who expressed these views to a local health department. It showed a very great unwillingness to listen and explore other professional viewpoints and scientific data, as the other presenters have pointed out. This type of thing has been damaging to careers and to businesses within our local county. And we can see that and how it's happened throughout the two years of the pandemic. We can do much better when we have our own local health department. And we can prevent those type of abuses from happening and let ideas and scientific evidence be expressed that is not always being allowed by the State Department of Health or our national government's CDC goddamn. We can do much better with our own local health department.
Thank you. I don't think you'll have a part in the argument. Well, I'm going to speak for Mr. Brown. Oh, you?
Yeah, there's a couple more.
All right. I start to smell a lull.
We're going to talk about demographics a little bit. I'm sure you're aware that Archuleta County and La Plata County are different. I mean, our population is 25% of theirs. A real key thing is that our population is so much older. Our average is 51. So we have an aging population situation going on that Archuleta isn't having to deal with. Our income is, like, average income $16,000 less. That's a lot of money. Some people can live off of that, so that's significant. The hospital situation. Our hospital has 11 beds when we're fully staffed. Theirs has 82. Ours is a level four. It's kind of reversed on that chart there. There's not as much service provided here as there is in Durango. And so that's like really key in how we handle healthcare. And then I threw in the subject permits. We only, in 2020, we only had 182. That is a manageable number. We can do this. This is not a big thing. So the way all this demographics relates to public health is, our folks are spread out geographically a little bit more than La Plata County. Our older population is going to need and needs more healthcare and more home healthcare than a younger population. We have limited medical services. We have a great hospital. We should all be really happy about it. It keeps expanding their services and improving itself, but it is still really small and limited in its services, and it can get overwhelmed really fast because 11 beds isn't very many when there's a sickness going on. That just means illness prevention and treatment in the home setting is even more important here than it is in the city. We need to protect that hospital by treating people at home and doing preventative. And I think of our own health department, we could focus on that and team up with the hospital and keep people out whenever possible. So customization, I guess, is what we could do if we did it ourselves. So that's enough about demographics. What's next? Next screen, please. The next step. The next step, I think, is to form a Phase II investigative task force. I'm using the word task force because their assignments would be a little bit different, to complete the research and the cost analysis for our local health department. I think we need to move on. I was the secretary, as you know, of the investigation committee. And in the time allowed, we didn't really finish the project, is the way I feel about it. We spent way too much time waiting for San Juan Basin to provide information that they couldn't. And then we just, we just ran out of time. We didn't finish. But what we did learn is that there are numerous counties in Colorado that have their own health departments. Some have been doing it for decades. It can be done. It can be done, and there are other counties right now that are doing the same thing, because they're complaining about the same stuff we're talking about here. It makes sense to many of us, including some people that were on the investigation committee with me, to call forth a second phase of assistance from these educated, invested people in this community to pick up where the investigation committee left off and finish the project. And as Commissioner Brown, you said a couple weeks ago, I think the task force objectives could be more fine-tuned, more defined and specific with a reasonable timeline, I think we could do that. So in preparation for that, I kind of, we kind of came up with some assignments of what this task force would do. It's a draft, but it's, you know, it's, there's a lot of time in this. That task force would identify all the resources available to address all of these objectives. They would contact and assemble all offerings from various government and private agencies. There are a lot of government and private agencies that help people start their own health department. The resources are out there, we just didn't get that far. We need to research the option to join a health partnership, such as the West Colorado Public Health, and I think you're aware, that running. They can do that five-year assessment, which is called the Health, Public Health Improvement Plan, which ties up my tongue, so I'm going to call it a five-year assessment. They will take care of that for you and the bureaucratic paperwork in Denver. And that way, what we do is run a health department, not do all the paperwork. And it's, so we just need to dig into that deeper. There are other ways to get that five-year assessment due, and it's due in 2023. So we'll talk a little bit about timing, because I have an idea of how we could move along in conjunction with that. Last fall, when I was looking around, there was grant money available to start a public health department. So we need to go look and see, is that still there? Is it still, I thought it was $53,000? I mean, that would just help us get going. We could contact other counties in Colorado that have started their public health departments, like Adams, Arapaho, and Douglas Counties, are just doing it right now. We wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel, let's go ask them, how did you do that? Why did you do that? We tried this once before, I think, Rami, right? And there was a vote, and the people did not want to change and do their own health department, is that?
I don't think there was ever a vote.
Oh, okay, because I didn't think some other counties did that. But we need to look into how this process would work. We need to look at what the structure of the board would be like, whether it would have medical people on it, whether it would be board of county commissioners with a doctor and some medical people, somebody from the community. There are options of how that board would look, so that would be something they would investigate. And look at budgets of the other three B counties more closely than we did in that investigation committee. We got their budgets, but we didn't really take time and dive into it. That needs to be looked at, because all the numbers are there, it's just not rocket science. Might the septic and food safety and air quality inspections be done by a different department within the county? Or could we sub it out to private sector to deal with some of these other health department issues in other ways besides doing it ourselves? So then we would need to look at what can be subbed out, because we know San Juan Basin, a lot of their services, in fact, most of their services are done by other entities here, by the Pugosa Medical Group and Access, and they're not here doing anything. It's obvious they're not. Why can't we sub it out the same way they are? So we just need to find out what can be contracted out and find the providers who are already doing it anyway, and then figure out, how many people do we need? How big a closet do we need? How big an office do we need? And put together the plan. I don't think, I think it's, sometimes we try to make things harder than they really need to be. So the last thing they need to do is create a timeline of how, what steps would happen to make this happen. My thought is they would be done by August 31, reporting back to you by August 31, so that you could give notice to San Juan Basin on December 22, of 22, so December of this year, because our five-year assessment is due by the end of the year in 2023, and we would have that assessment done by the entity to which we are moving. So that would be the partnership that we might join to get that done, or whatever other options we find for getting that done. But it would be done by us, not San Juan Basin, so that would be a good breakoff point. So this is a draft. I think it needs to be refined and objectives clarified even more. But there are educated and experienced members of this community just waiting right now to help finish this. They want to do it, so I'm, it's starting a small business, it's just, I think we can do this. We can do this. We can do this.
Are you going to go to the last slide?
I'm paying for marking it up.
And I want to thank you guys very much for hearing us today. I think this is, hopefully, the first of many conversations we have. Where I came from, I don't think I would have had this opportunity to sit down with you guys in the way that we have, and I don't take the opportunity for granted, so I appreciate it. And, yeah, with that in mind, I hope this is one of many conversations, and I think that we can all agree that you guys care, you show up to work every day to work for us, and we care, we keep showing up here, and we all care. So let's do what's the best for our community.
And we hope we can see that final task force, smaller committee, complete that work, so that a decision can be made.
Any questions for us, or any further to follow up on?
There's a lot of information, honestly. And I'm going to have to put some thought, from my perspective, into this a bit. I'm trying to, I guess, reduce this down to a manageable topic that I can contemplate and decide how and why and where and when.
I totally understand that. And when I initially came up with the idea of doing an investigation committee, I think I talked with you about that in January of 2021, I guess, not that long ago. I knew it's too big a project for you guys to do on top of all this other stuff. I mean, even what you heard today, it would take me a week to figure out. So what we're doing is offering the help of some smart people to do the investigation, to continue, we just didn't get done. So hopefully, take that off your plate a little bit. And so it doesn't come to anything. So we find out that, no, what we're doing is fine, okay. But we're not, we weren't done, I don't think we can make a decision until we start going.
And, I mean, and there are communication and transparency issues that need to be cleared up. There are issues that need to be addressed. And if anything comes out of this today, hopefully it's that.
And Commissioner Brown, I, just to follow up on Mary, that's comments to what you said, you have a lot here to consider and to look at. I remember watching, it was one of your work sessions, maybe about a month or so, and it was when you were discussing this very issue as whether or not to make a decision on going with our own local health board or not. And I was watching on Zoom, and I noticed each one of you, when you, when this subject came up as having the knowledge of healthcare, you each had to laugh and say, well, we don't really know anything about that. And I thought, well, that's something I can certainly relate to as well. But then I thought, that's why we got people like this. And we have people like this in our community that we can turn to, who have the knowledge and expertise in the medical area, not just on the management side, which I think you could all handle easily, but on the specifics of healthcare itself and various parts of it. But that's the type of thing you turn over to them to make decisions on and to guide you in the process. And we've got a lot of talented people in this county. And I'm sitting right next to three of them right now, and I know many others in our community. So don't get bogged down by all of the information. Use the professionals that we have in our community to help make that decision. And I think that's where it's easiest to get it.
I don't think we need to spend money on consultants and stuff like that, I really don't. And I've talked to some people that have run medical centers who live here. These are all people that are here waiting to help. We don't need that. We're free, and then you can decide what to do at the end, you know what I mean? Because we want it.
I totally get it. And the thing is, if this moves forward and we end up making a decision, we got to have all the information in order to make a reasonable, sound decision at the end of the day. Fire relators, any emergency scene or any type of situation that you're in. If you don't have all the information you need, you're not going to put the fire out. You got to have it.
So essentially, what we're asking for is your approval to create the task force, create objectives, timelines along with it, get back to you soon with all that for your input, to make sure that we're getting the 360-degree look at this situation that you need and that our community needs to make this decision. And that's really, we just want the approval to continue and work closely with you throughout this process to make sure we're supplying the necessary information.
And I don't even want you to have to do what the task force would do. I would like to provide that and you edit, make that easy. You don't want to invent this, I already did, and this is only one page, so you just can't. Commissioner Shaw, you're going to be at the Thursday meeting at the San Juan work session?
I'll be by the same place.
I mean, of course, yeah, you can't attend those.
Well, I think we're supposed to be public, we're supposed to be there this time, but I've got some stuff to be on the couch.
Is the public open this time? I sent them an email asking that and never heard back, that's just like how they are. But Shailene and I came up with some, like, a synopsis of what we think about San Juan Basin. If you're on that, if you're in that meeting, and they ask you, like, what are the reasons that you would want to leave? Or we've got just a couple outlines here that you could use, if you like, to respond back to them.
We've heard them ask you a few times. I mean, they, yeah, and we know that not every, all of our opinions and beliefs reflect yours, but as our representative.
But you can say, this is what some of our folks are thinking.
This is within our concerns. Be that to you, and pick out what you want, but it's hard to get input to them if you're in a public, if you're talking to everybody about that.
The fact that this is public, you would like a better communication with them, you don't have to tell them who's there.
Yeah.
And to the board as well, it wouldn't be necessary for the board members if they thought it's too controversial, whatever, they could assign that to the staff members because they're the planning, it's all public, but so far, they haven't got any traction either.
Yeah, you're in a hard spot.
Commissioner Shaw, I wonder what your thoughts are, if you want to share them, on one of the comments that was made at the last meeting of San Juan Basin Health, where the La Plata County Commissioner made the comment, they need to address this issue and get it resolved because they're concerned that Archeleto County might be drawing down or pulling them down. I'm not sure who the them was that that commissioner was referring to, whether it was the health department district itself, or if it was La Plata County. But I heard that comment, was kind of concerned about that. Why do they feel Archeleto County is potentially going to pull them down? What were your thoughts on that comment?
Well, the way I would interpret it is, you know, they're worried about the financial structure stability of, you know, if we decide at some point, just where we're going to go. I think, well, almost without that, we have to restructure, and La Plata County would have their own.
Well, they would, yeah.
Yeah, they're just going to ask that.
Then we would have our, we choose to do that. But, I mean, I think there's, where it's brought up, there's also a great opportunity, if we do go that out, that we can contract somebody's services out, or we can just take on what we want and contract the others out. And that's the big deal, I think the big unknown is the money. Because I think anytime you have a little control, when you have elected officials sitting here representing the citizens of this county, and we actually have control of it, then we can more easily represent what the community wants, what our constituents are asking for. So I agree with that, I think it's, you know.
We need to finish the budget, the money part, because that's the number one thing everybody's going to talk about, right?
Well, it's, it always comes down to money.
But I think there's money out there.
You want to know the problem, follow me on it.
There's a lot of state and federal money in the state as well. The knowledge of where that comes from is crucial.
We might get a part-time grant orator from somewhere, they're all over. One of them's been on, they're out there. I have a question. If San Juan Basin Public Health was to dissolve, what happens to their assets?
It's a good question, I don't know.
Could you look into that?
Yeah, I really don't know how that would work, and I might have to check with other county attorneys to see what has happened when.
Like the tri-state one?
Tri-state, right.
What happens to their desks and the buildings and stuff?
I don't know, I'm not sure how that would be done. I think that since the money for a lot of the infrastructure and personal property came from rare counties, that we'd be, we'd be allocated, we'd be obligated to provide some of that to us, personal county, but I don't know for sure. It's a relatively rare situation that happens.
Yeah.
I mean, things are hard. I just don't know, because it came out of a joint budget, you know, I don't know. And that's something we might have.
It's a very asset that too we could have.
Very likely would be part of negotiations or from some of these public health, and if that would happen, La Plata County would also have to figure out what they're going to do, because then they would basically, well, La Plata County would partner with them, because that's all they're deserving. And so the board would have to perform as well.
And they probably aren't in a mood for that.
I have no idea.
Maybe in their best interest?
I mean, just right now, there was public health of 91 employees, and how many employees about to make it in here? 2.5. No, 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 I mean, 100.
The whole county?
We have 180. Yeah, so I mean, they're half our size. So that tells you, I agree that that age would suddenly increase. So, but anyway, yeah, it's something we'd have to look into during the year of, when we give, if we give notice, a year of transition. And that would be something we'd have to work out for that part.
So would it be possible for us to have a much quicker presentation to go over our objectives, let you all, you know, our goals, objectives, timelines, let you all absorb it and get back with us? Can we get something scheduled for that? Because that's really important for us to be able to hit the ground running with the project.
Before we make any decision on that, I think it has to be a regular.
Yeah, so it has to be a regular meeting. So if you would like to present something to, for the board to consider official decision, you can put that together, provide a scenario and.
So it would be like a timeline and then a task force objective?
Right.
That would be the first step?
I would say a task force with a timeline after, because, you know, if you do a timeline first, you end up having a task force, then.
Well, that'd be, I mean, I think the board would like to see is, here's what our objectives, our goals, our objectives, here's a timeline that we might achieve those objectives with. And then, because the board would have to appoint the committee to move forward and actually provide information to the board.
Because I mean, you kind of imagine the order of things that would make more sense. Let's go do this first before we do the money part, you know what I mean?
And as you've had time to think about that over the past weeks, when you yourselves were scrolling it up, some of the comments you made, we wanted to be a much smaller group of people, a smaller committee. I thought, I love that, that's appropriate. Do you have any thoughts on that in more detail right now, what you would like it to consist of?
I have my opinion. I mean, I would say five or less, odd number.
I would agree with that.
And we'd like to make recommendations for you. Obviously, you may have some other really talented people in mind, but we would like to put forth a list with qualifications to agree to have a group like this with different backgrounds, so, and let you all decide who you think would be investigated.
We had fallout in the last investigation committee. We started out with seven, but there were really four that did the work. So it means a group can be too small, or it needs to be so specific that we know they're not going to fall out. Like, you are here, and we are going to work hard and get this done, and not have people that. that don't have time to come to the meetings and.
Yeah, the commitment, the commitment has to be there.
Yeah.
The rule.
Yeah.
Before we go any further, so I didn't wanna interrupt you during your presentation, but, you know, we do have community members that reach out to us from time to time. And one of the community members that reached out to me recently was Dr. John Bruce. Dr. Bruce is right behind you. And, you know, in, in full disclosure, Dr. Bruce does sit on the board of San Juan Basin Health, but he is not here as a San Juan Basin Health board member. He's here as a citizen that is, that has offered to be a resource, that's offered to, you know, help us kind of, or help me kind of identify and potentially clarify some of these things that are being said. And I wonder, Dr. Bruce, if you have any thoughts. It's my understanding that you have been a part of creating a health department before. And if you don't have thoughts that you are prepared to share with us today, or just on what the comments are here, I certainly respect that, but maybe at a later time, we might be able to ask you to share those thoughts with us.
Sure.
Please come on. I know you had, you had a phone call that took you away, so.
Yeah, sorry, that was an urgent call.
That's perfectly fine.
So, you know, I wanna make sure that it's really clear. I don't represent San Juan Basin Public Health Board here. I'm a citizen of Archuleta County. I'm very interested, I'm invested in Archuleta County. And I think that, you know, I do have some experience. I'm an infectious disease physician. I have public health training. I ran a public health department with over 115 employees and millions of dollars in grant funding. So I didn't actually start the health department.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. You know, I do have some experience in public health. Public health is a passion of mine. I think it's, is something that has typically been underfunded and under-resourced, not just this country, but countries around the world. So, you know, I do think it's an important part. Hearing some of the comments and presentation that was done today, I think that's wonderful that, you know, we have people who are passionate about this issue and doing something for Archuleta County and, you know, wanting to try to explore what the best options are for us. A few comments that I would probably offer is, because I did hear in the presentation, there's sometimes a mixing of what is our healthcare system from what is public health. And I think that we need to be careful that when we think about planning for public health means that there is some lines of distinction between the two. And I don't think that's always clear for people. You know, we do have considerable advancement in our healthcare, our acute healthcare services here in Archuleta County over the last decade or so. I mean, I remember 15 years ago, having to put pressure on a laceration and drive all the way to Mercy to get sutures because there was no urgent care here, there was no hospital here, there was actually maybe, I think, only one primary care physician here, so.
Gym stitch up if you could.
You know, it wasn't readily available, so we made some pretty good progress in acute healthcare. But we need to differentiate that from, from public health and the needs of public health. And I think public health really has to really focus on, you know, providing services and prevention of healthcare issues that are facing citizens of our county. We really have to understand what are the determinants of health in our community. And if you look at, you know, what are the causes of death here, you know, what are the things that are impacting our health? Those are some of the challenges I know that commissioners have faced in trying to get some, just some basic understanding from San Juan Basin Public Health about, you know, how are their services meeting the needs and addressing the issues of, or the determinants of health here in Archuleta County? And it's different from La Plata County. There are some similarities, but we probably have a different account. So I think we have to, we have to think about that. The other, the other thing is, I don't think that building a health department is only about money and providing an office space and hiring a bunch of people to do, and it's much more complex than that. When you talk about public health, I think you have to talk about having people who have the expertise and who have the training and who have the experience to be able to manage and deliver those services to the citizens of your community. So it's not a trivial matter to hire somebody with, with the training and expertise that's needed to provide that service here. And, you know, we have a county, you can see our median income there, yet real estate is very high. I mean, our real estate is almost as high as La Plata County. So that means we have to hire people with training and expertise at salaries that are going to be competitive to bring them into our county. We may not have the necessary public health trained people within our county right now. So how do you bring those people in on a salary that they can actually survive here and, you know, get affordable housing? I mean, these are not trivial matters. So I think we have to think about that very, very carefully because you need, if you're gonna build a health department, you really need, you need to have training and expertise people to know to do that. Whether it's restaurant inspections or, or, you know, providing, you know, women and infant child services or immunizations for children or whatever it is, you know, diabetes education, those would require people to have some knowledge in public health. So I urge you to at least consider that. And it's not just a budget number, not just an office space. The other, the other thing is that, you know, building a health department may take time. And so it's not something that can happen overnight. And so, you know, maybe considerations in terms of a gradual approach to this. And, you know, that might be something that the commissioners should think about. You know, how do we, are there some services that you could do initially and then gradually build? And then the other is to really weigh all of these things with, you know, trying to see, you know, how does, how does that plan kind of offset, you know, a plan to try to improve transparency and communication with the existing structure that we have? Because there's trade-offs, you know, there's benefits and, you know, these things are, there's pros and cons to each approach, and I think you have to kind of weigh those very The other, the other thing about public health, I think we have to really be careful of is not allowing, you know, we have a diversity of citizens within our community and we have a lot of difference in terms of political viewpoints and variety of health viewpoints and a variety of concerns in terms of priorities. And we have to figure out, how do we serve our community the best way that benefits all of the citizens of our community and not just one viewpoint and not just one group of people? Because we do have diversity here. And I think we have to take into consideration all of the citizens. And if we're gonna truly serve our communities, we have to serve all of the people, not just a few people. So we have to be very careful that our own individual viewpoints don't be cloud our judgment in trying to address the needs of all the community and our citizens. I think we have a responsibility as citizens and citizens of our community to try to benefit everybody. And those are just some thoughts I have. And listening, and I really appreciate, you know, you all coming here and voicing your views in the presentation. And I'm sure it will serve the commissioners very well. So I'm just, I'm here as a concerned and interested citizen in Archuleta County.
Well, we appreciate you joining the board there. We were really happy when that happened because, you know, there's a representative from Archuleta County there.
Well, some of the knowledge, too, that's changed for me.
Exactly. Yeah, that's awesome.
But to Bill and Dr., Bruce, you said, you guys brought it up, and I would go about this, so we'll just stop at that. But I think it's important that we do some kind of a public survey.
I fully agree.
To see, you know, what the public as a whole, what they want us to do, what they want, see how to.
Yeah, I have no idea who didn't get served. Who had needs that didn't get served?
Well, exactly.
Or is everybody happy? Was it 12 people or 120 or 12,000? Or how many people went there? I don't know. There's no answers to that. That would be great to know.
Well, yeah, I think that's probably the most important cog in this whole wheel, if we start there and then.
What do you think, Dr. Bruce? Is that useful, to survey the public and see where they stand on?
I think it's blind to survey the public. I think that surveys like that often don't take into account the complexity of the situation. So you'll get, you know, a simple survey, yes, oh, we should stay with San Juan Basin Public Health, or no, we should split off. But, you know, the public, you know, the average person who's, you know, working their ranch or going to the restaurant or, you know, serving in the business here, won't understand the complexities of public health or creating a public health department or improving relationships with San Juan Basin Public Health. So they may have a particular view, but I'm not sure that, you know, the survey will do the commissioners a whole lot of good because it won't be able to really get at the complexities of the situation.
You know, I think many times it's how the survey questions are.
Well, I'd say I would have put that on there.
And the other thing is, I think that if there was a survey, and I can understand the request for it, I think it would be best to serve the public after the task force has completed their work. Then we would have a clear comparative to present to the public over against what we have with the health district and then over against what the task force is describing.
And to give you a good example of that, I mean, if you look at England since with Brexit, they put it forward as a referendum, yes, vote for Brexit or no vote against Brexit. But the common public didn't understand the complexities of the whole economic systems to be able to really understand that well. And so, you know, it came down to a referendum and yes, they voted and they moved. And now they're having to deal with the complexities that are impacting them. And, you know, some of them said, you know, great, this is, this is wonderful, but, you know, we didn't understand, you know, what's now hitting us. And others, you know, are, so whenever there's a complex situation, it's hard to get an upper-down yes, yes, no vote.
And like electing a president.
So do you think Archuleta County could, just as an example, I'm just throwing this out there, could take on septic inspections and still have them do the rest of public health? You were talking about.
I think it's possible.
I think we're capable of it. It depends on what is the law allows for. I think we can choose the ones we want as our health department instead of everything else. I think it's certainly, I think you can. Minimal things that our health has to do.
Right.
Whether or not be internally or by contract or external.
But can we take back things a little at a time as we develop our.
I mean, right, and that would be part of the transition. It would be possible, you know, if we, if the county decides to withdraw, to again, contract with whatever is left of San Juan Basin Public Health or other entities, provide services until such time as we can bring people in-house to perform that. Or maybe it is at a level where it doesn't make sense to have someone in-house to, like, to do the contract with that. So for long as the services are in place, we meet the statutory minimal requirements, I think we can choose the system that looks best for us and take a look at, I think it would be other counties of similar size, you know, because I think by the way the county was a lovely time, part of San Juan Basin Public Health, and then they withdrew in full military power. Of course, they're a little bigger than we are. I can't, I'm a little more, more, I'm a lot of. But again, we can look at other counties, I'm not sure, like Delta or, you know, I'm not sure Routs is the same size.
Yeah, we need to dig into those for a good investigation committee.
To see what they do, what they do in-house, what they externalize, and just kind of get a really good idea funding-wise. And again, part of the survey maybe is, are Archuleta County citizens willing to vote in a tax increase to fund part of health? Because that may have to happen. And there's a lot of reluctance to fund things in this county in the past, which is now kind of tie the county's hands when it comes forward to funding other services, other departments. So that may be something that needs to be addressed.
You may want to also explore the statutory limitations or statutory requirements of being all-in or all-out, or maybe being partly in and partly out. I don't know what the statutory requirements are in the state.
Well, I think some of that could be spelled out and defined in your plan. That you take care of essential services and that you have a plan in place how to address other services gradually moving forward. I would, I would think a state agency that reviews that five-year plan would understand that and would be sensitive to it. At least I hope it would.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys' time.
Great time. Great sir.
Are you ready to travel? Travel?
Oh, sorry.
Just Shayne.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're staying here.